Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Tonight is a special committee of the whole, first of three finance-specific committee of the whole meetings, as we call this meeting to order. I just want to acknowledge that the land in which we're gathering is the traditional territories of the Coast and Strait Salish people, specifically the Lakongan people, known today as the Tsonghis and the Iskwa' Amalt First Nations, and that their historic connections to these lands continue to this day. We have one councillor who's running a few minutes late, but we'll get through the procedural pieces of this meeting, and I expect her to show up here fairly shortly. Up first, we have our next item is the approval of the agenda. Can I move her in a seconder? Thank you. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed, non-opposed? And then mayor's remarks. I feel like I have to fill time now. I didn't have any mayor's remarks prepared, just because we have a... But just for anybody watching or new to this, we are typical finance process where we have a series of meetings. We try and provide a little bit of an overview at the beginning of the meeting to put things in context. We then go through the items one by one. We typically don't make motions to change at this time unless there's some direction for additional information that comes back, but we will have opportunities for public input. I think in the interest of just allowing people the easiest approach to this, I'll probably allow some public input after the presentation, and then again after, at the end, towards the end of the meeting, as we go through after council's questions. So with that, I think I'm going to move on to the special meeting matters. I know councillor Braithwaite is extremely well-prepared for this meeting, having seen some of the notes that she sent in already on the agenda, on the financial package. So why don't I hand this over to our director of financial, director of finance and asset management, Christopher Payne. Welcome, Mr. Payne.
Thank you. Good evening, your worship. Before I begin, I'd like to introduce the district's acting deputy director of finance, Marilyn Latkin, on my left, and I've got a cheering section in the back, Lisa and Grad, who collectively get all the money and spend all the money for the district. So they're a really valuable group here. Hopefully, we don't have an earthquake today in this building.
You feel the same way, Mr. Payne.
I should have asked, yeah. Should have asked some of them to stay home just to mitigate, you know, risk here. So I'm just going to put up the PowerPoint presentation so everyone online and in person can follow along. So what we normally do is we begin every single budget meeting with the budget overview, and that provides everyone who's tuned in for just that meeting to view the entire budget or the summary of the entire budget, and then we work our way through the specific budget items. On today's agenda, we have the operating budget. We're hoping to get through all of the operating budgets, so all the department operating budgets, and then we'll look toward getting into the capital plan on March 26. So on today's agenda, we'll talk about the budget principles and process, how the budget was put together. We'll have a look at the consolidated numbers, principal issues and short-term risks to the budget, some asset management information, and then we'll also have a chance to talk about the crossing guard program as an agenda item, and then we'll get into the operating budget presentations. So the budget is prepared with a service-level approach in mind. This approach assumes that council wishes to continue with existing service levels that are approved in the previous financial plan, and then if there's any adjustments to those service levels that council has directed throughout the year, the previous years, we integrate that into here as well. Staff endeavor not to increase service levels without first asking council for direction to do so, or decrease service levels as well. And that's not a, it's not a black-and-white process. Maintaining existing services is a matter of judgment in many cases, but that's certainly the objective of staff. And that way, council can deliver their governance and staff can deliver the operations. We endeavor to align funding sources in the financial plan. Sometimes there's a bit of misalignment, and what I mean by that is that ongoing operating expenditures are matched with ongoing operating revenues. In that way, if council has directed that a service continue into perpetuity, that there's a funding source available for, in perpetuity as well. And a misaligned example would be funding ongoing operations such as staff salaries with a grant, a one-time grant, because that will come to an end, but we'll still have the continued financial responsibility of paying the salaries thereafter. Another principle enacted in our five-year plan is that it's, there's project-budget carryover, so any projects that were approved in last year's financial plan and began in the 2023 year, if they're not complete or the funding hasn't been utilized, that funding is carried forward automatically, and this allows staff to continue with council direction without interrupting it for budget deliberations. And it's sort of a unique thing in local government where budget deliberations begin after the year has started, and it's this principle that allows that to happen. And that's very similar to the five-year financial plan, because the five-year financial plan is a spending approval for the full five years in there, and it's really up to council to adjust that five-year plan every single year. And so similarly to the project-budget carryforward principle, if there's a project that has received funding in the second year of that financial plan, we go ahead and spend that money starting January 1st. So in this, in this case, you'll be wise to keep an eye on the 2024 approved expenditures and the 2025, because come January 1st, 2025, we likely won't be having budget discussions until later on in 2025, much like this year, but that doesn't mean staff will discontinue their operations or projects. They'll continue what was approved in the 2025 year of this, of this plan. And again, that really allows staff the certainty that what's envisioned in the financial plan, they can go and get that done. And you think about it, a good example is a tender. So suppose that budget wasn't approved informally at the community level until the end of March, and then it's approved formally through the bylaw process in May, on the middle of May. If we were to wait till then to start the projects, we wouldn't get tenders out until midsummer, we wouldn't award summer, we wouldn't award tenders until fall, and then we wouldn't get to work on a lot of the capital projects until fall or later, and much of that would carry forward into the next year. So again, the five-year financial plan approach really allow, facilitates continuous operations and maximum output that council has approved. We take a lifecycle costing approach to all, to all capital. Most of the infrastructure that you'll find in the financial plan, capital budget, is replacement of existing infrastructure. However, when there is new infrastructure or an increase to the capacity of that infrastructure envisioned, we provide lifecycle costing information so council can understand what financial obligations they're committing the district to, to, over the life of that asset. One, an example I use every single year is the Carnarvon Park building, which is a brand-new building in most respects, and so should council approve the capital funding to build that building, it will obligate the district to ongoing funds for the lifecycle of that, of that asset. So it's more than just a decision about the initial capital funding, it's also kind of obligating us to, to provide funding moving forward. In terms of financial plan transparency, the financial plan that you have before you, it's not a formal legal document. It provides transparency to the community and to, quite frankly, to the staff and to yourself. That is translated into financial plan bylaw. Bylaw is the legal, legal spending authority, and it's summarized at a much higher level that provides us with spending authority flexibility, but the financial plan document provides very clear intentions of what that, that spending should be, and we do quarter two and quarter three budget reporting that reflect that format. So how do things appear in the financial plan? Again, council-approved service levels appear there, so we presume that the services that are approved in previous years continues forward. If there's council-directed initiatives through the year, council priorities plan is a, is a strong example of that, they appear there, and if there's any specific council direction throughout the year. And, and this staff has got used to very much asking council throughout the year for direction on various items, and included in, in that direction request, the financial implications of it. So we, I take that, I accumulate all of that, and I put it into the financial plan for next year, and you'll see lots of evidence of that. I reference the, you know, the motions, the resolutions, the days that the resolutions were passed. The other thing is, you know, sometimes there's a staff interpretation needed of, to implement council-endorsed plans. You know, we endeavor now to, when we prepare a plan that council is to endorse, that the financial implications of that are included in there. The Fire Master Plan is an example of that. Council requested that staff go back and articulate the, the financial implications of that plan. We did, we came back and council produced some direction moving forward there. The Urban Forest Management Plan is, is one of those, is an example of those plans that perhaps specifically articulate the, the financial implications, some for sure, but staff check in with council in terms of what they think is necessary to carry out the vision in that endorsed plan. And another important point about service levels we'll talk about later, later on is that service level changes do happen organically through regulation, and there's lots of new regulation over the last five years that have forced the staff to adopt a higher level of, of service level, and that's despite council direction. So we, we take that into account as well. This is the first year of the financial plan where we attempted to sort of articulate the financial cost of regulation. It's difficult in some cases to articulate what that is, but we wanted to show the order of magnitude of what higher-level government regulation does to our budget, which really is one reason why often our tax increase exceeds, you know, our general basket of goods in CPI, because we're improving service levels that we're directed to by, by senior levels of government. Just a reminder that public input is welcome at every stage of this process. The district is legislated to provide an opportunity for public input, and that's what these three meetings provide, plus the, the bylaw adoption council meetings, although that's more just formalizing the financial plan, but those are the, the opportunity for, for the community to provide input. Also, the Strategic Initiatives Divisions, Division annually does a, an annual questionnaire as well. So the starting point with this financial plan, and different CFOs and different municipalities have different flavors for how they go about building the financial plan. Some municipalities prefer to sort of build the financial plan bit by bit, decision through decision in the, in the budget process. I've avoided that. Council has seemed to, to endorse the process that, that we've undertaken over several years, which is, I come to you with a complete draft. That way, council and the public has an idea of the cumulative impact of all the decisions in the financial plan, and if council wants to make changes to that, that we can reduce or increase the financial plan accordingly. That way, you know, all the decisions that are made in the financial plan have equal opportunity to be considered, you know, because if you are building a financial plan bit by bit, adding a tax increase here, a tax increase there, you might be more hesitant to approve an item that's presented last, right? So this provides the, the entire impact to council, and then you can weigh as a, as a body what's important to you. We take council direction, not council direction. Certainly, we're going to listen to your comments throughout this process. We'll definitely listen to how the financial plan can be communicated better or, or more effectively. If you want to see a formal change to the financial plan, we look for a motion from, from the committee. Our tentative timeline right now is we'll go through the operating budget today, capital budget on the 26th, and then wrap up on the 28th. We may need to do the bit of capital budget on the 28th. You know, it's the engineering public works budget is quite large. Hopefully, we can get that done on the 26th, and then parks wrecking culture is also quite large. You know, maybe if we need to go on the 28th, we can do that. Hopefully, I could provide Director Miko with some, with some idea, so he could show up when he needs to show up, rather than the whole time. But there's also the option for discussing parks wrecking culture economic analysis as well. So April will, we, we, there is room for further wrap-up if needed. Keep in mind, we need to adopt a financial plan bylaw by May 14th of that, this year. That means one meeting in May, one meeting in the end of April. So, you know, if, so we have basically a one-meeting contingency unless we need to call a special, otherwise we need to call a special council meeting. What will result from these budget discussions is two tax rate bylaws, one being a property tax rate bylaw, the other one being a boulevard tax rate bylaw, often parks wrecking culture fees and charges bylaw, although that doesn't have to be adopted by May 15th. The tax rates bylaw and the financial plan bylaw have to be adopted by May 14th and in a particular order. So an overview of everything that's encompassed in this financial plan over the five years, it's $284 million in operating expenditures, a small amount, with capital expenditures of nearly $180 million. Almost $10 millions of that, $10 million of that is grant contingent funding, the majority of that being Uplands sewer separation, but there's also other grant contingent spending, active transportation plan, for instance, or active transport, there's some active transportation, capital funding that's contingent on grant funds. $57.5 million of that would be borrowing. We'll talk about borrowing later on in, probably in the capital plan is the best this time. The majority of that borrowing there is, is envisioned for the public safety building. The budget that we have in there, I just want to state upfront for the public safety building, is, is really undefined, right? The public safety building or any buildings that we scope out, the costing of that will significantly change based on council's vision, and the way we'll go about that, of course, is with some sort of options analysis, and we'll present the lifecycle costing of the various options, so council can consider the capital cost as well as the ongoing costs of various services that can be provided, be provided from that, from that building. And as you can imagine, a building like Carnarvon Park could provide several different sorts of services. Childcare, for instance, being one, general recreational services. In the public service building, you know, there's, there's opportunities to, to partner with other emergency organizations or, or even municipal operations. So there's a, there's a wide variety of different operations that could be considered in those buildings. Those will substantially change the estimates. So the estimates in there are really with a very unclear vision for that, but we are undergoing exercises to clarify that vision with council and the community, absolutely. And then the remainder of that funding comes from reserves. So you'll notice here, we're, we're authorizing use of reserves to the tune of $110 million in the financial plan. We'll talk about reserves contributions later. We'll be contributing over probably close to $60 million in that timeframe. So that's a net reduction in reserves by over $40 million. And that's just representative of the desire of, of council and the capability dependence of engineering to really increase capital output for core infrastructure. So some of the principal issues and short-term risks that I've identified in the financial plan, infrastructure replacement, as we talked about, and we've talked about for, for several years now. Workplace labor shortages are, are certainly an impact. They can actually, in, in terms of park wrecking culture output, they can reduce our ability to produce revenue. So it's not just about being able to produce the work. For other departments such as, I'll just use fire, police, administration, workplace labor shortages, it becomes more difficult for us to get the work done that's being asked of us, but it's not so much a budget issue. It doesn't end up reducing the financial resources we have. In fact, we end up with a financial surplus in that case, but that's not always the case. And I would say it's not the case with Parks Wreck and Culture Department. It actually hamstrings our ability to produce better financial results. So on that, on that theme, parks wrecking culture, financial performance, we'll talk about that in a little bit more detail in a couple places here. Council authorized economic analysis be undertaken last year through this year to identify opportunities for fee increases such that they wouldn't impact demand in a way that would reduce our overall revenue. So we're getting to the later stages of that analysis, and we'll be in a good place to present that to council. May not be within this, this budget deliberation, but it will be in time for council to make some decisions in time for the next financial plan. Inflation is slowing. The force growth factor applied to generalized increases here was 3.4%. That's what it was at the time I was writing the financial plan. It's actually come down, I believe, to below 3% for Victoria in, in that timeframe. But there are some municipal-specific force growth factors that are above that, insurance being one of them, legal, other, other sort of things, which I'll talk about in more detail as we go on. But inflation is trending in the, in the right direction, getting back to the Bank of Canada, a target range of between 2% and 3%. My understanding is that the Bank of Canada really wants to get it down to the lower end of that range, so although nationwide inflation has come within that range, they haven't reduced their central lending rate, and they will increase the lending rate if inflation takes back up. That's the message from the governor of the Bank of Canada. Imposed regulation, which we'll talk about, I believe, in the next slide. Investment yields is a risk. We are enjoying some high investment yields right now, some good investment performance that is helping to fund our sustainable infrastructure replacement, because most of the investment returns that we're earning are on, on reserves, and those reserves are used for infrastructure replacement. If the Bank of Canada reduces its lending rate and, and yields continue to decline, then it, it reduces our ability to, to produce that, that return. Further, if we end up spending the full $110 million authorized under this plan for infrastructure replacement, we will have a much smaller balance in which to earn a return. So it's going to decline quite a bit. And we have, we have integrated a decline in investment return expectations in the financial plan, but, you know, if I could, if I could predict investment yields, I'd be rich. Unfortunately, I don't have that ability. So just to touch briefly on PRC financial performance, what you'll see in this graph is sort of the latent impact of, of staff increasing and decreasing our budget and our budget expectation based on last year's expectations. So in, on the red line, you have the actual recovery rate, and it was the highest-ever recovery rate in 2019, and there was a budget of 63%. So there was quite a gap there, which produced an operating budget surplus. Of course, 2020 came around, and the pandemic threw a ton of uncertainty in there, so the, the actual recovery rate declined significantly. We had already prepared the budget for, for 2020 before the pandemic was announced, like a couple days before, actually. I remember getting the financial plan done, and then, oh, now we're in, we're in our emergency operations center. Oh, I deserve a break, but I remember that feeling. And then at that time, the provincial government provided some COVID-19 restart grant funding, which we've been using to offset that decline in revenue since then. So you see our expectations as a result of that financial impact in 2020, staff budgeted for a much lower recovery rate, 39.2%, but they were able to achieve 52%. So there was a good gap and a good budgetary surplus, and that allowed us not to utilize all of our COVID-19 restart grant. Shortly after that, expectations in reality started to get much closer, and you'll notice in 2023, again, that gap thinned. So moving into 2024, the recovery rate has gone up in the budget by a couple of points, but really in order to achieve that financial performance from back in 2019, there needs to be a significant increase in what the budget is, an, an actual, you know, 10%. So the concern there is that the, that there won't be the demand, capacity, ability to produce that recovery rate under current circumstances, whether that be use or fees or, or use of facilities, and so there's a requirement to, to consider what needs to happen to, to fund that gap in the future. So here's just an example here, a bunch of numbers on the screen, which everyone loves to see, but you can see the COVID-19 restart grant from 2021 through 2024, and how much of that revenue loss it was subsidizing, and that's gone down, and that's indicative of the recovery rate going up over the years. But unless we produce a budgetary surplus this year, then that restart grant should be gone. You know, we did, we did use about this much last year, so, you know, unless financial performance is, is above last year, it will be gone. But even if, for instance, if, you know, what, what we've seen lately is the Parks Wreck and Culture Department being able to produce a budgetary surplus of half a million dollars. If, even if the PRC is able to do that in 2024, then half of the COVID-19 restart grant will be used, there will still be half there, but we're just bumping forward when we need to face the reality of the COVID-19 restart grant being gone. It can be spread out over a couple of years, but overall, it's still a 4% ta, equivalent to a 4% tax increase that the funding gap needs to be addressed. So this year, we, we took, there's smaller numbers on, on there for everyone. This year, we took a stab at quantifying the cost of recent regulation, and I'm talking probably four or five years of increased regulation. Here's just some prominent examples that'll be put on there. The housing target order being, being a significant one this year, really refining the staff priorities as a result. New regulations requiring an accessibility committee, which folks here are familiar with, new soil remediation regulations, new statutory holidays. I believe there's been two over the last five years that I've been here. New five-day sick pay for auxiliary folks. Certainly, WorkSafe BC, the scope of what that benefit is, is provided for has significantly widened, and then there's the Canada Pension Plan Enhancement Program. And, you know, this is not to say that these aren't valuable service-level improvements whatsoever, make no judgment on that, but certainly they're not free. And so they escalate our force, force growth, because, for instance, you know, if we need to pay staff for five-day sick pay, then we need to cover, cover more, more of that cost by bringing in new folks. Canada Pension Plan Enhancement, we need to charge higher taxes to pay for the employer portion of CPP. And so all in all, we're estimating, you know, one-time costs of these regulations are upwards of $1.7 million, which is net of the growing Canada funds, but on, our ongoing operating costs every year is about $1.1 million. So that's, you know, that's 4% of taxes right there have been added over the last four or five years, out of estimation. So here's just a snippet. If you, if, if you in the public and anyone wants to know what is making up the tax increases, this is a good chart to look at. It's in the financial plan as well. This year, the proposed tax increase, there's some options to change this, but the proposed tax increase is 9.68%. I'm going to just highlight some of the, the major parts in there. You'll see new staffing makes up 1.32% of that. 0.75 of that approximately is Fire Master Plan staffing. I call it Fire Master Plan staffing. It's just increased fire, fire staffing, about $248,000 if I recall correctly, and then a portion of that would be Parks Wreck and Culture staffing as well. And we'll go through both of those items today. Looking forward into 2025, you see the COVID-19 restart grant funding ending, I said 4% earlier, but it's about 3.24% that would be needed to recover that. And if we're going to start funding the debt for Carnarvon Park at current estimates, it would be 2.39%. Yields could change for sure. Borrowing yields have come down over the last year, probably about 100 basis points, about 1%. So that could continue to happen, and it's really all about what the bond market expects the Bank of Canada to do. You know, so luckily, we didn't borrow at the historically high, which would be last year. More borrowing is integrated into the five-year tax increase, 5% there. That's a combination of starting to fund the public safety building construction as well as some core infrastructure. We have some core infrastructure replacement slated for, for debt funding. North Oak Bay pump station is an example of that. Council applied, I believe, $1 million of the growing community. Council applied, I believe, $1 million of the growing community funds to that to lower our debt burden as well. It saves some money. So a lot to do with debt, really. And then just other items in there that are a result of council direction, that staff asked for council direction. So I don't usually like putting a ton of words on a slide. I did that this time. I just wanted to provide some options upfront in terms of reducing the tax increase if council wishes to consider them. You know, the 9.68% is sort of the rock-solid financial principle tax increase thing. You know, I'm happy to recognize that council has to consider many viewpoints and many different objectives, and so that's why these are put forward. This year, so the first one there is you can reduce the tax increase by $277,000. That's 0.84%. That's due to some of our debt that, well, all of our debt was retired last year. We have no debt right now. What we do as a matter of principle is we take that budget and we convert it into a transfer to reserve budget, to pay for infrastructure. And that's a good budget practice to have, especially if you haven't achieved sustainable funding levels. You know, mind you, council has done a really good and aggressive job of moving towards that sustainable funding level. So it's not like if you chose not to do that, you wouldn't still be making significant progress. So that's why that one is on the table. Non-market change, we talk about this every single year. As our community grows, there's new buildings. Those new buildings are now subject to tax. We never got that tax before from that building. So we can use that. Typically, you know, that new building is going to necessarily increase the operating costs in the future because we've got new citizens that we have to service, and they're going to increase the costs for infrastructure as well. So we take that money and we increase our transfer to reserve budget, again, a matter of principle. Council can choose to use that to reduce the existing tax increase. And again, you know, it's reasonably supportable, given that council's making really strong progress towards that sustainable funding target. The next thing, which is, you know, recommended less, I guess, would be you reduce your forced growth inflationary factor to non-specific cost drivers. So that's a lot of words. What I mean is, there's some budget items that have very specific increases. You know, we got our numbers from Ecom, for instance. And Ecom, we have to increase our budget by that amount. We can't reduce that by this means. But there's some budgets that aren't specific, like general office supplies, training, general consulting. So they're not tied to a specific contracted increase. I've just applied the Victoria CPI to that, being 3.4%. I thought that's the most defensible approach. And defensible in terms of, well, that's the real cost to maintain existing service levels. You can reduce that if you wanted to reduce it to, like, 2%. That would reduce the budget overall by about $150,000. Caution there is if you do that year after year after year, you necessarily are decreasing service levels, and you just have to recognize that. And that's within your purview, for sure. So if every year you make this exception, you will have reduced service levels in no time. The other, the last one is that you could fund the Parks, Struck and Culture deficit using surplus for $139,000. So, you know, we were using the COVID-19 restart grant to fund the deficit fully. Because we don't have a full balance there, there's still some that's not funded. So we've automatically funded that with a tax increase to the tune of $139,000. You could use surplus to fund that for one year. Again, you know, it's gonna, you're gonna have to figure that out for the long term at some point. But it's an option for the short term. So we'd like to just kind of show asset management funding progress here over the years since 2017. Just gonna grab some water real quick here. Now, one thing we did, fortunately or unfortunately, however you look at it, was we revised our annual sustainable funding target, kind of for the first time since the SUR plan was produced. And it provides a level of comfort, I guess, because COVID-19 really did impact the cost of goods and services and sort of in a scary way, in many ways. So what we've estimated is that the annualized cost of our infrastructure, so that infrastructure divided by its useful life, has gone up from $12.2 million to $15.1. The way we did that, we did a quick and easy way. We used the B.C. Highways Cost Escalator. We thought that was the, I couldn't find a better, relevant index to use. The only better way would be for us to redo the SUR plan, which is just more, takes more time. So given that, you know, we've revised where we are on the target. We're still at 89%, according to that calculation. And you have to keep in mind, you know, the public has to keep in mind as well, this is all an estimate, right? I'm assuming that I know to a reasonable degree what the cost of our infrastructure replacement is going to be and what the useful life is going to be. Those are two variables that we have to assume. So who knows? We could be at sustainable funding right now, or we could be at 80%. But we're, progress is being made. That's the undeniable part about this, I think. And so, you know, if council reached 94% and wanted to consider that they've achieved sustainable funding, you know, that's defendable, right? And lastly, I think this is, we're getting close to the last slide for the overview. So the first year, we integrated capital output measures into the financial plan. I know this is something that the public and some members of council have been particularly asking for because, so what if we are spending $20 million in capital? What does that mean in terms of how much capital we're actually replacing as a proportion of the total system? We tried these capital output measures in quarter three. They seemed to work well. And so now we've integrated them here, and you'll see them in the asset management section. So we have a sustainability annual output target. Again, that's the kilometers of road or kilometers of storm drain divided by its useful life. That's how many kilometers we should be replacing every single year if we were keeping on top of it. So that's what that column is there. But there's a whole bunch of infrastructure that what we're saying is beyond its useful life. So we think that the risk of failure exceeds what it should be. And so we need to deal with that overdue infrastructure faster. So we've got this total output target, which exceeds your annual target. And the intention for the engineering department is to scale up in capacity to be able to clear that backlog as well. When you look at the annual targets, we've come a long way. And, you know, some of those targets, we've actually exceeded on an annualized basis. Water and road, you can see that's the case this year, 157%, 170%. We're still not quite at the backlog targets, and it's over 25 years. I believe the financial plan has it over the 15 years as well, which I believe was requested. So depending how fast you want to deal with that backlog, but they're getting up there. So, you know, another thing to comment about this is, you know, storm sewer is about half of the annual target, and that really includes upland sewer separation. So take upland sewer separation out of the equation. We're actually quite low. But if we're able to actually get upland sewer separation done, it shows the ability of the organization to get a certain amount of capital done. And that capacity could be used for replacement infrastructure in the future. You know, we've been blessed with some very talented folks over the last couple of years that have built that capacity. And I think, you know, this will show. But now you have a baseline to kind of look at it year after year and come to a judgment on performance in that way. In terms of debt management, I'd just like to point out where we are in our statutory limits. We have a borrowing limit. Because the interest rates have gone way up, our limit has come way down because it's really based on how much of your tax money you set aside to pay debt servicing. So if the interest rate has gone up, the amount that you're servicing debt has gone up. So the limit has come down. So under the current interest rates and proposed funding, proposed debt funding in the plan, you're looking at reaching 20% of the statutory limit by 2027, approximately. So, you know, you can borrow up to five times what the financial plan has. Probably not recommended. It's actually, that's a lot of debt when you think about what we're able to borrow. But that's, gives you an idea of if we're getting close to our limits. And then, again, lovely screen with a lot of numbers on there. What I would take from it is if you look at the infrastructure renewal reserve, the beginning balance, the ending balance, you see quite a decline. And that's after we're making our annual contributions, which are significant, to the tune of, you know, over $10 million anyways. And the Capital Works General Fund as well, $17 million down to 7.1. So if we can achieve the capital output envisioned in the plan, the reserves will be lower at the end of the day. Now, I've done this every single year. I did it in sort of a graph format the last couple of years. I don't know why I did numbers this year. But I've done this every single year that I've helped prepare the financial plan here. And we always fall short of these forecasts because this is maximum authorized spending and usage of our reserves. I do see, though, that capital spending is really picking up in the engineering department. So these forecasts are becoming more applicable. They're becoming more realistic. And again, it gives council the sense of how much you are authorizing. And then we go back and we see how much we actually get done. So that's the end of the overview presentation, Your Worship, and we're available for any questions if you have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Payne. I will take questions from council for this general overview. I do want to just say if anybody's online and wish to ask questions after council asks us questions, or anybody in the room that wishes to ask questions or make comments, I'll invite that after this, before we get into the individual departments. Because the individual departments can take a fair bit of time and grinding. So if people want to make their comments and not sit around for the whole meeting, they're welcome to do so. So with that, turn over to members of the committee. Is there any questions? Go ahead, Councilor Braithwaite, and then Appleton.
Thank you, Mayor, and through you to Director Payne. I'm looking at the Options for Tax Increase Reduction slide. And I'm wondering if you have any idea of if we chose to do, say, for example, the Do Not Convert Retired Debt Servicing into Transfer to Reserve Budget. If we did that, what effect does that have on future years as far as how that would increase a future-year tax rate?
Mr. Payne?
Thank you, Your Worship. Well, so essentially, through the life of this plan, you will not have contributed to your reserve to the tune of $1.4 million. At some point, you have to fund the replacement of your infrastructure. So it, you know, kicks the can down the road, for lack of a better term. You attract less investment revenue in the interim. So the tax increase is just kind of shelved for future years.
Thank you. Councilor Appleton, and then Watson.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you to staff picking up on actually the exact same line item and the exact same item. This is an ongoing, this retired debt servicing, is this essentially a carryover line item that we've retained since the debt was retired, essentially? But, I mean, the amount that would have been contributed towards debt servicing would have changed over time. Does this sort of represent whatever essentially the last payment was, or at least where the payments were at or the debt servicing was at, at the time that it was retired? And essentially, we're just keeping that line item? Is that how I understand that?
Mr. Payne?
Through you, Your Worship. Yet, if you hadn't inflected your question, that was pretty well the answer. The, you know, last year, we paid $277,000 in principal and interest, and that was funded from taxation. We don't have to anymore. So we can reduce our budget and get rid of it. Or what I've done is just turned it into a different budget item, Transfer to Reserve Budget.
Thank you very much. Councilor Watson?
Thank you, Mayor Murdoch, and through you, please, to Director Payne. And my questions are not nearly as many as I had last year when I was taking this in for the first time. But I'd just like to ask for a re-explanation of a couple of things that I didn't follow. We're still on this slide, Options for Tax Increase Reductions. If you could walk me through again what you mean by use non-market change to reduce tax increase, because I'm sorry, I didn't follow that.
Mr. Payne?
Yes, thank you, through your worship. So the best way I can explain non-market change revenue is if you have a community that have 10 people with 10 houses, and you have a budget of $1 million, and then that's in 2023. And then 2024, now you have 11 people. Maybe you've expanded your borders or there's been a subdivision. So now you have $11 million that you can draw from those 10 houses. Well, if your expenses have gone up to $10.5 million, you can actually reduce your taxes by using that new tax revenue. But the problem with that is that that 11th citizen will necessarily force you to increase your budget. It just might not be now. And so there's a misalignment between when new tax revenue comes on board and when the operating and infrastructure costs related to that new citizen, you know, comes later on. And keep in mind, you know, a lot of the non-market change revenue comes from subdivisions, rezonings. There's actually not new capital or new operating expenditures being incurred, not till 10 years later. So, you know, and I will say, the prominent thing to do in the province of B.C. municipalities is to just reduce current taxes. But that's why a lot of communities have to depend on building up in order to fund existing services. That's why it's not considered sustainable. And, yeah, I think that's, hopefully, that answers the question.
Yeah, thank you. I followed you this time, and it wasn't a problem with your initial explanation. It was just me trying to catch up to you. And then the next slide I'm referring to is capital output measures. And if you could just explain to me again the difference, well, the sustainable annual output target versus the 25-year backlog target?
Mr. Payne?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. So let's just assume for simplicity that we have 100 kilometers of water pipe, and the pipe, on average, lasts 100 years. So you need to really replace one kilometer every year. And if you did that through the lifecycle of all the water, there would be no backlog of infrastructure replace, and that's the target that you would aim for. However, if half of that has gone overdue for replacement, you've got an extra 50 kilometers that you need to catch up on. Now, it's 150 kilometers divided by 100. You should be replacing 1.5 kilometers per year to not only keep up with what is coming due for replacement, but also what has already come due for replacement that you haven't addressed in the past.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'm just going to invite anybody who's online who wishes to ask questions. You can raise your hand in the Zoom app, or if you're calling into the 855 number, you can hit star nine to raise your hand. This will not be the last chance we have to ask questions or make comments. But I do want to make sure people have the opportunity, if they can already come in for the first part of this meeting, to be heard. I'll give that a moment if anybody's there. Is anybody in the room here who has questions or has comments at this point? Come forward. Yeah, so just come to the front table. It's very simple. You just need your name and municipality of residence. And we typically ask you to keep your comments reasonably short, sort of three minutes-ish, but the floor is yours. Oh, we have to turn on the mic in front of you as well. Your button should turn it on. Apparently, it's not working, so we'll just get you a different. Thank you.
There we go. Thank you. My name is Paul Taylor. I'm a resident of Oak Bay and live at 1737 Hampshire Road. And wonderful presentation, extremely clear and lucid. I'm interested in how provincial housing targets impact the budget. So we were just, in a way, discussing the potential of new development and revenues that would come from new development. And it wasn't clear to me, saw the, you know, reference in the Planning Department, so page 71, doesn't look as though there's a lot of development permits that are anticipated for 2024. Maybe that looks different for years to come. So do you have any common, I have a question for the CFO. Do you have any comment on that?
Sure, I'll give that to Mr. Payne. And maybe he'll provide some context as well for some of it. Mr. Payne?
Yes, thank you for the question, to your worship. There's a couple different things that we need to consider. And we're sort of playing the waiting game, to be honest, about seeing how it impacts. So greater volume of land use applications is going to impact our revenue, for sure. The analysis that we conducted initially when we increased land use application permit fees is that there still is a subsidization that occurs. So actually, an increase in development. So actually, an increase in development applications will increase our net cost. Or what happens is that the land use application timeline lags if we don't resource that difference. There's certainly been the need for short-term reprioritizing of our activities. So we've got, you know, Housing Action Plan, significant, over $2 million of funding that's been set aside from the growing community funds to address the housing target orders. But those are one-time costs, and then how that translates to the ongoing is still a question. On the bigger picture item, if development occurs and there is new housing, and there's, you know, 20%, I'm just making that figure up, then the question is, there's new operating costs that result from new development, but in Oak Bay, since we're built out, it would most likely be infill. So it's not like we would be expanding our infrastructure reach and the costs that go with that. And the theory is, is that infill, it becomes an economies of scale for operating that infrastructure for fewer people or more people in the same geographic area. So again, but that's a big picture item that you have to see how it plays out in the long term. I think I've covered, I think I've covered most of it. So we are waiting to see the impact on the number of land use applications, how efficiently those land use applications can be processed. There's certainly investment going in to streamlining the development application approval process, so there's a potential of producing more revenue without additional workload. And, yeah, that's what I, how I can answer.
There's probably a couple of other little aspects. We don't, there's a lot we don't know. So I think where the development happens will have an impact. So if there's, say, a few higher-density developments at the end of a street, we may have to upgrade the infrastructure for that, which is fairly expensive. I think Richmond was, or Bernaby, was, had assessed about a million dollars to upgrade the infrastructure for a block of infrastructure. So that would have a potential impact. There is the ability with the new financing tool the province has allowed to allow us to charge new development to cover some of the cost of some of the additional facilities and infrastructure called a community amenity charge. I think that's what it's called. Community cost, yeah, community cost charge, sorry. There was, anyway, they reversed the thing. So, yeah, community cost charge. So we don't know exactly what that amount is allowed to be. We're doing that work right now, so there's a little bit of additional revenue that can come from that. And all of this, of course, is balanced against the fact that it's expensive enough and time-consuming enough to build right now. We don't want to also artificially inflate costs beyond what, you know, direct impacts are. So a lot of that assessment work is going on. It will have an impact, certainly this year. It's not just financial, but many of our other projects, like our village planning and some of the other pieces that we were working on, are now sort of put on the shelf while we spent this year catching up on the housing front.
May I ask one follow-on question, your worship?
Absolutely. I think these questions are probably of interest more than just you, so.
Okay. The growing communities fund, would that be used primarily, then, for building staff capacity to manage growth, or would it be towards offsetting capital costs for growth?
So the growing community fund was originally a no, there was no attachment required to it. They said, please go for it and spend it. In fact, the implication was spend it on fun, attractive things, probably in anticipation of an upcoming election. The reality is that they've also told us that, oh, you're going to have costs attached to this, you have all this money we just gave you to facilitate that. At the end of the day, it's our choice as to how we spend it. Right now, we've allocated about 2 million of that funding towards just getting the short-term housing pieces in place, rather than trying to do that through borrowing or drawing down reserves and so forth. It's one-time money, and we have a one-time cost that seems like a reasonably good alliance. There's also some, there's additional money that we've set aside for active transportation and new playgrounds and a few other sort of aspects that are, we're still trying to get out the door.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Taylor, and please feel free to stick around and ask any more I don't see any hands of people online wanting to ask questions, so why don't I hand this back to you, Mr. Payne, and we can continue? Oh, sorry, please come forward. I missed your hand in the back row there.
I think I was just waiting my turn for a change. Maggie Knight, resident of Oak Bay, and I just wanted to make sure that I understand sort of the figures around this large amount of money that we might borrow and that some of us might pay for the next 30 years. And on that, in that page 120, that chart around that borrowing, that debt work, the numbers for 2027 and 2028 are the same for principal, interest, and total payments despite 23.5 and 18.5 million additional debt in those years respectively. I would love to understand why that is the case, so that it makes my brain clear.
No problem. There are actually a few typographical errors in this report. I'm not sure if this is one of them, but I'll turn to, we've already flagged a number of them that are going to be fixed in the next version, but, Mr. Payne?
I'm just going to refer to my Excel spreadsheet, which is an authority. So I'll just be one minute. Thank you for the question. Now, I will say, just before I get there, that often there is a lag between when debt borrowing is authorized and when the payments are paid. We borrow through the Municipal Finance Authority, which they do their best to create a payment schedule so it's consistent and predictable, which means that sometimes that delay will occur. Let me just pull up my debt. Debt proceed. Oh, thank you. Debt projections.
I'll make a little point on here, too, because Mr. Payne did a good job of talking about the percentage of our liability allowance, and that we're still at about 20% or so of that. That being said, we crossed the threshold sometime between those last two rows, in which we exceed the 5%, which we can borrow without electoral ascent, so we have to go through an electoral ascent process to do further borrowing. And that's there, again, intentionally to stop a wayward council from going ahead and doing something that the illiterate does not want us to do.
Yeah, that's correct. Through your worship, if you don't mind, I'm going to take that question back. I do suspect it's a lag between when borrowing is authorized and then when the interest rates are incurred, because my debt schedule actually matches what's in the financial plan. So, but I'm going to take that back and just confirm that, and I appreciate the question.
Mr. Payne, anything else?
I have two other questions. The first one is just to confirm my understanding that the liability servicing limit is 25% of the annual controllable sustainable revenues, but the percentage on the side there is the percentage of that. So it's not like, oh, we're at 20%, which is almost 25, it's actually 20 of the 25.
Mr. Payne, that is correct?
Through your worship, absolutely correct. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, I just wonder about, you know, when we see, when we see the cost that sometimes council deliberates around, you know, can we afford $500,000 to do this traffic calming thing over here, or, you know, can we afford to fund, you know, it's relatively small amounts in the scheme of things, and I'm sure we'll get into this a lot more in the capital discussion later this month. But I'm wondering if the, in the process of developing this plan, if staff and council consider other options in terms of, say, a one-time large levy in relation to, you know, the new public safety building or that kind of thing, which might reduce debt servicing? And for those of us who will be paying it for the next 30 years, I'd maybe rather pay more one time and sooner than, you know, perhaps wonder if that sort of 3.7-plus million dollars a year is going to eat our lunch in some areas? And if the overall theme is that we did not tax ourselves enough for the last some decades, I'm conscious of thinking about sort of the intergenerational impacts of where does that eventually land? And I understand that it's never popular as an elected council to charge your residents a large amount of money, and I think that's the question that should be asked, because otherwise, you know, what, we may have more ideas, you know, those in the capital plan considered expenditure, there is no, the pedestrian sidewalk work is just replacement, it's not new things that I know could come forward, and many other things. And so I don't want us to be four or five years from now going, oh, well, we're too in debt, we can't do anything. That would be distressing. Thank you. So the question was, is there modeling of kind of one time, or is the only kind of available tool a percentage-based increase, that's how that gets communicated to the public?
No, it's a good question, and I'll let Mr. Payne answer it. There's, and there are models, and maybe it'd be helpful if, just for us and the public, if you could talk about when that level of detail is discussed on a project-by-project basis.
Yes, through your worship, so the first step will be the feasibility study for, I'm just going to use the public safety building as an example, a feasibility study to different costs and services that are provided and those options are presented. That forms for us the overall cost that we need to look at. It's at that point that we can look at different funding options. Certainly, there's going to be a need to borrow in one way, shape, or form. If we increase our capital output for core infrastructure, there's going to be a need to borrow. But it's at that time that council can choose different amortization periods, different amounts of debt, internal financing, so using our reserves and paying it back to ourselves at an interest rate, or spreading out that borrowing authority over several years. And of course, when we go to borrow, there's many checks and balances. First of all, if you do exceed the, there's a low limit, that if you go over that limit, you have to get electoral ascent for that, which is essentially, minimum is a counterposition process. That's the first check and balance. And the second check and balance is, has to be approved through your regional district, and then the municipal, and then the ministry, and then the Municipal Finance Authority. So several opportunities to communicate different options with respect to funding, and there's no way to avoid that, actually.
May I just ask, I'm going to just follow up on your question, Ms. McKnight, but there's also been, in the past, where there's been local improvements, where there's been some like local improvement taxes or things along a corridor. So is there anything sort of similar to that, if it's a broader value type of project?
Your worship, not for the capital that's being proposed in the financial plan, because they're very much general community benefits, where local area service tax and the debt financing that often goes with it is related to new infrastructure for a localized improvement.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McKnight. I was too quick on the draw last time, so just going to check if anybody else in the room wishes to, I think most of the rest of the room is staff, so probably not too many in the room. Already asked online. I'm going to move forward. I will give people an additional chance to ask questions. Go ahead, Mr. Payne.
Thank you, worship. So next on the agenda is just a discussion over the Crossing Guard program, and the school district indicated that they may be able to attend remotely, but I'm not seeing Ms. Stride in the room, so she's given me permission to speak about the Crossing Guard budget. You'll notice that there's a-
I'm just going to just note, there's one iPhone, which is unidentifiable, so it might be that person. So if there's, if school district representation is online, if you're within the Zoom call, you can use, obviously, the app to unmute yourself and speak, and if you want to call in, it's the 855 number in the agenda, and you can hit star nine to raise your hand, and we'll go over to you. But I don't see anybody doing that, so.
The Crossing Guard program, council gave conditional approval for the Crossing Guard program in late 2022, for the 2022-2023 school year. That was at the dissolution of the nonprofit association that ran that. So council approved and directed the staff notify that it be a one-time grant and subject to future discussion on funding. I believe council also requested that staff survey local municipalities to see the model for this, and we, in fact, did do that and found that the model was fairly identical. The one difference being that some municipalities had several crosswalks and points of crossing to consider, and so the school district and the engineering department in those municipalities would work together to identify the most important crosswalks. Here in Oak Bay, there's only a couple to consider, so that's, you know, that wasn't necessary. So in this year, the school district is requesting funding, and the funding total would be an overall increase of approximately $3,900. That's about 70% increase from previous years. The main reason for that is actually just the way that the calendar falls this year. There's two extra days of service, which increase the number of days that the funding would be required. There's also other things like recent ratifications and collective agreement to the tune of 8% increase in benefits, 6% increase in wages, and other, those are the main cost drivers. So their request has been integrated into the draft financial plan as it is, and I think, yeah, that's all I have, that's all I have to say on that at the moment, and if council had any questions, I'm available to answer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Payne. Are there any questions? It may be helpful for the two new counselors, just to give a little context here. This was, I think over the last 10 years, it's gone from $0 to, it was all volunteer-run, to they decided to use, they were having a hard time sort of managing the coordination of parents to volunteer, so they went to an external agency, a nonprofit, which provided the service at a very low cost. And then it was so low cost, the external service stopped providing it, and so they turned to internal staff and realized it was expensive, and so turned to municipalities to pay their costs for it. So that's kind of how we've gone from $0 to $26,000 a year in the course of about seven or eight years. So that was part of the rationale a couple of years ago, to sort of say, okay, we'll pay it for one year, but we really wanted to have a better look at this to see if it makes sense. Sorry, Councilor Patterson, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and through you, I guess to Mr. Payne, he's the only one here about this. But just with the district now funding this, where does the responsibility lie, kind of as an employer with the school crossing guards? Because we're paying it, so we pay it to the school, and then they are responsible. I've heard from so many of the school crossing guards that it's getting somewhat dangerous out on the roads and a number of injuries. So just wondering, as we pick up the burden for the wages type of thing,
Mr. Payne?
Is it necessary to have a contract?
Yeah, through your worship, the crossing guards have an employee-employer relationship with the school district, so they maintain the responsibilities that come with being an employer there. I hadn't considered any other indemnification from the district standpoint, but I don't know that that would be necessary, but that's the contractual relationship right now.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Payne. Council agreed?
Through you, Mayor, to Mr. Payne. Mr. Payne, is this an escalating cost that will continue to go up year by year? And I'm going to be really cheeky now, I, you know, I'm sure we will, probably, I won't speak for council, but I would love it if, in return, they would restore our school liaison officer. That would be great. That would also help the issue. But I guess my point is, this will continue to escalate, this cost? Thank you.
Maybe we get a different microphone for, great, thank you. It was humming strangely. I think that was really a rhetorical question. The school liaison officer is basically something we pay for anyway, so there we go. Thank you, Mr. Payne, for that. We can move on to the next item.
Thank you, worship. So we'll begin operating budget discussions now, and we'll start with corporate administration. So if you're familiar with how the presentations go, we typically talk about some of the accomplishments and the planned accomplishments within the purview of that department. I comment on the operating budget and the variances that you see there. The, my colleagues will be available for questions that pertain to operations and accomplishments, and I'm more than happy to provide a comment on any of the- and I'm more than happy to provide a comment on any of the on any of the budget items. So in corporate administration, just a couple highlights of the accomplishments from 2023 was the preparation of the council priorities plan, the development of the grants management division, which is well underway in creating results. There's also the the long service recognition award, which was was first crafted last year, which was a which was a hit. This division obtained a water lot lease from the province for the Marina lands. They received a safety improvement award from B.C. Municipal Safety Association, developed a flexible workplace arrangement policy, and established an employee wellness hour lunch session. So personally, I would, I'd just like to comment that coming out of COVID, you could really see the corporate administration, especially the human resources division, coming alive to what normal operations would be with establishment of many of the programs that are underway. In 2024, Marina deliberations will continue. There's a plan to implement flexible work arrangements, conduct an employee survey, and establish a graduated return to work program. Now, we, the district was already accelerating its efforts to improve our graduated return to work program as it reduces the cost pressure on our WCW C B premiums, as well as keeps our staff happy and engaged, healthy and engaged. But there was also new new legislation imposed as well for that intent as well. So luckily, you know, we had an active intent there. So when we look at the operating budget, I'll just comment on some of the variances that you see before you. The communication budget is increased, that's due mainly to staff staffing job reclassifications, job description reclassifications. In the risk management, we've actually seen a bit of a moderating of the increases over the last three, four years. You've seen 10% increases, eight to 10% increases. A lot of that related to insurance being between 10 and 15% increases over the last three, four years, and risk and legal. But we see the the legal cost has moderated to some degree. We're still at the tail end of what they call a hard market for liability insurance premiums, and we currently have a liability insurance experience premium through M I A B C, and that's due to the frequency of our claims history.
Mr. Payne?
Yes, sir.
Can I just ask where it's that showing I see on the screen here is page 52 of 184, but we don't have that slide on ours, I don't think.
Yes, sorry, your worship. This is the financial plan document. I should have
Yeah, sorry, that's where I was. I got it there. Same, for a second, I thought it wasn't matching. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, worship. Now, I've got the the page number there is of the PDF. You'll probably have to add a couple page numbers to find it in the agenda number, so. So Ms. Latkin is going to help me with the page numbering in future iterations here. So that is your risk management. Now, new operating budget requests, there's a small request for $10,000 to our grant to need budget to support the South Island Powell. So simple presentation, your worship. Ms. Ploof is here to answer any operational questions, and I can answer any financial questions you may have.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions on this section? Happy to come back later if people need to, but, okay. One of the more straightforward ones, Mr. Payne. I'm going to just go through a few of these departments, and I'll go back to the public again and seek any additional questions.
Thank you. The next operating budget is the administrative and residential facilities. Maybe Mr. Graham wants to join me if he's available. Well, we'll go through this rather quickly as well. Some of the accomplishments for this division were was the implementation of the preventative maintenance program for facilities, as well as the commencement of facility condition assessments. And you'll recall the asbestos abatement at the library. The parks roof was completed with the participation of the parks park staff, as well as space planning that was conducted for Athlone and a lot of successful moving there for our lease there. And the Carnarvon Park Design Project, RFP, was was issued and awarded and is underway as well. In 2024, the district will be receiving its temporary apparatus bay at the fire hall, which this division will certainly assist with. There's also a goal to begin the public safety building feasibility assessment, continue the Carnarvon Park discussion and design process, as well as complete the fire, immunis ball washroom construction. When we look at the the operating budget, and I've got page 54 of the
Yeah, we're at page 54.
Okay, thank you, page 54. You'll see that there's an increase in the revenue to the tune of $114,000. That's simply a computation error from last year. So we reduced the budget in error by last year to that amount, so it's really restoring what should have been there last year. So that takes some pressure off the tax increase this year, which was incurred from last year. I will note as well. Yeah, there's some there's some small typographical errors on this schedule where we've got the total total increase of 17,600, well, it's actually 14,200, so so small change. The percentage increases are correct, and the overall is correct. You'll notice here that the forshore lease increase is 9.6%. That was a newly negotiated forshore lease through the province, but that's more than offset through the sublease to the Oak Bay Marine Group. So that so that increase is completely offset. In terms of new operating budget items here, which is identified for ease at the Athlone Court leases, which is not just lease, but also the operating costs of occupying that space, is about $110,000. So that, you know, offsets the increase in revenue from above. So thank you, worship. That concludes this presentation. Mr. Graham's here for any operational questions.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions of Council Patterson?
Just a brief one for Mr. Payne, if you could remind me the, or I guess Mr. Graham is here too, the Athlone Court leases. Could you remind me how many employees that lease accommodates?
Sorry, through your worship, just doing a count of my head, 12.
Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead, Councilor Brithwaite.
Just going back to the the charts on page 54, that's the dollar change column that that you that have to have the changes in it, like all the way down that column? Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have just a general question for Mr. Graham, and that is, your position has is fairly new, and until we had a facilities manager, we often didn't know. We haven't had a, the three monkeys approach to it, just kind of covered our eyes, our ears, and our mouth, and hoped that nothing went wrong with any of our buildings. I haven't seen in this spreadsheet any sort of substantive increases to sort of maintenance costs or other things that that might come. Is there is there anything that we can, is there any changes sort of coming over the next five years that might look different in some of the maintenance of those buildings?
Your worship, a good question. Much of the cost increases that are being incurred through preventative maintenance that Mr. Graham is overseeing is actually incurred in the capital budget. So he's got a general capital maintenance budget to the tune of $400,000 in there. And in fact, one thing that we'll we'll, well, I mentioned now, but we're also going to mention in the capital budget is that, you know, Mr. Graham has dedicated funding for many of his projects. You think about the Carnarvon Park, you think about the public safety building. So what we're finding is that that budget is being underutilized. And so Mr. Graham is often contracting some of the general maintenance activities. And so the proposal is, is that actually an FTE get get funded through that program and conduct some of those smaller scale capital projects throughout the project, utilize that that funding that already exists to its fullest extent, and Mr. Graham can can be focused on the whole program, as well as the larger projects that have been improved.
Thank you. Is that so that's essentially a person who has the skills to go and do general maintenance type work for on the buildings in our municipality? Is that the plan?
Through your worship, we're still developing the job description, but it would include procurement models for routine capital maintenance, things like that as well. So there'd be project management aspects, as well as hands-on work.
That comes out of the capital project that we already have assigned then. Thank you. Any other questions? Council Appleton?
Thank you, worship, and not so much a question, just my last opportunity as this financial plan is produced and it feeds into the into the collective consciousness. I just want to recognize Mr. Graham again for the hard work and the accomplishments in this section. The asbestos abatement at the library was a huge project, well done and managed with a bunch of different moving parts. So just in my role as chair of the Greater Victoria Public Library Board, I'd just like to offer my congratulations and thanks again for that project.
Many little projects and big projects that you take on as you try to, so thank you. I think we'll we'll move on to the next item here. I don't see any other hands. Thank you very much, Mr. Graham. I may just ask if people are, if you're, you and other directors are here, I'm not sure what the plan is, if the expectation is to leave after the session is done, or everybody sticking around to the end. I might just ask that people stay at least till we have, give the public a chance to ask some questions as well. So we'll move on, we'll do, I think we'll do finance, police, and fire, and then I'll take a quick break to allow any public comments or questions on those, any of the things we've covered, and then we'll move on to the last three. Go ahead, Mr. Payne.
Thank you, worship. Moving on to the finance and IT, and you see our revenue collector gentleman there, and he's also in the back. Tom, can you turn the camera towards him? Thank you for collecting the taxes.
No one should look that happy collecting taxes. That's just cruel.
I just wanted to call attention to the FTE chart here, and you do see there is an increase to FTEs, but all of those FTEs have been funded internally. The, you know, I maintained a consulting budget for several years, and there was some significant restructuring, and and there were some retirements that took place, so we could rethink of how the department was structured. And so that's where any and all of those FTEs come from, from existing funding. In terms of accomplishments, the the department was able to put together almost entirely the parking standard operating procedure, as well as conduct the utility billing process review. The next steps of that review is still pending, which would be bringing forward recommendations to council for amending a bylaw and establishing utility bylaw or utility policy. Asset management software was scoped, hasn't gone out to competition yet, and the comprehensive asset management plan project begun. In 2024, phase one of the comprehensive asset management plan should be complete, and phase two should be underway. Also, there will be implementation through our payroll division of the implications of the flexible work arrangement policy, which would be significant undertaking, as well as lead with many other departments assisting in the development cost charges and amenity cost charge programs, which are part of the the housing initiatives. In terms of the the budget variances, the one variance that I'll call your attention to is the information technology division, and this is essentially an increase in our licensing, but not just the licensing fees for Office 365. It's mostly actually our managed IT services, and the number of employees has increased. So the number of licenses, therefore, have also increased. We just came to the end of a contract with our managed IT services, and they had a, they hadn't refined the number of licenses, but our staff have grown significantly since that contract was first signed almost 10 years ago. Your worship, that's the finance and IT department presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you for that. Really? Nothing? Nothing at all? I have one quick question for you. There's on page 61, line one of table one, there's a school tax commission, and I'm not a term I'm familiar with. Can you tell me what that is?
Yes, thank you, your worship. We we the school tax on the province, and they give us a nominal amount to do that work. That's what that is.
Great. Thank you very much. I just realized, I think, I'm not sure if it was actually mentioned in the in the achievements of either your department or the or the administrative, but I do want to just acknowledge that in 2023, last year, we won the U B C M's Excellence in Governance Award for, and that was represented in recognition of the life cycle of reporting, so including like financial plan, annual report, strategic planning process and that whole cycle, and how those tied together. So I do appreciate how readable this report is, and I do want to recognize that never in our history have ever won an award like this before. Well, we won the one in asset management the year before, but just kudos to the staff for putting those things together. It's an important, important to be recognized by peers for these kind of things. So and to you too, Mr. Payne, I know your your department is extremely, you know, created the financial, whole financial side of that equation, so. Council Brithwaite?
Thanks, Mayor, and through you. I know on page 61, there's a few little changes that are going to happen to one of those columns as well, but I'm just wondering if the percentage change at 0.3% stays the same, but the dollar value, does the dollar value stay the same, or?
Mr. Payne, any more specifics than that, or is that?
No, your worship, no, that's a very clear question, and I'll have a very clear answer for you. Yeah, it's right, yeah, no, the 0.3% is stable. Yeah, it's, that's what that is.
Thank you very much. I see no more questions on the finance. We'll move on to your, the police.
Thank you, your worship. For the police budget, we hadn't prepared a presentation only because the budget's actually been been approved through council, but the chief is available if you have any operational questions, which seems to happen from time to time during the budget presentations.
I'll ask, is there any questions related to the budget for Chief Constable Fisher? As noted, we've, the police board already put forward a budget that has been approved by the council. It's a different process than than this one. So I don't think, seeing no questions. I would like to just take the opportunity, though, to acknowledge Chief Fisher, because this is his last budget and budget presentation. We didn't know that when he presented the budget to the council. So he has announced his retirement, and I really want to express, and we haven't really had a chance as council to see you, and just to express how much how much we really appreciate the work that you've done for our community and how much you've influenced positively our, you know, community policing focus and and that sort of center of excellence that you built here. So we're going to miss you very much. I wish you all the best in your future adventures. You haven't left us, and won't for a couple more months, but I just want to take this opportunity in case we don't have a chance to see you again.
No, thank you very much. And as I've mentioned before, I really appreciated the the support that we've always received as a department historically from the councils in this community and the community as a whole. It's a it's a great community to work in.
And with that, this is your last opportunity to reduce that budget if you wanted to, if there's a
That would set a tough precedent for the people that are going to come behind me here.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Constable Fisher. With that, we move on to fire protection. Oh, Council Green, sorry, you have a, and Council Patterson?
Thank you. I do have a question of the chief through you to to Chief Fisher. On the crime statistics, do you break it down between adult and youth or not? Or do you just, or is it just generic in terms of of crime in the community? Thank you.
So the crime statistics that that are included in this report are consolidated, they're both. They're not broken down any further than that. Obviously, that's something we can do if if needed in the future, but the stats you see tonight are consolidated.
Anything else?
Just a supplementary question through you. Is youth crime stable, falling, rising? Just a supplementary question through you. Is youth crime stable, falling, rising? Thank you.
Chief Fisher?
I would say the youth crime in this community so far is is relatively stable. The one thing that we have seen as a trend is, and this is in relation more to to school age children, is we're getting involved and at a much later stage now when we first are advised about not having the school liaison program in place. And that that provided us a fantastic opportunity, not just at the high school, but I would argue in all of the schools, to get involved with either at-risk youth or at-risk families in a much earlier stage. Just greater awareness around issues that may have arisen in the school, whereas now in the in most cases, we're waiting until somebody shows up at our front door, and usually you don't show up at the front of the police station until something is far more along that chain, which is unfortunate.
Yes, thank you for that. And I I just want to add that early intervention down the road is prevention. And I can speak to this with some authority given my early career, but I really appreciate the efforts that you have made in that area previously. And thank you very much for that.
Thank you. And so is the counselor who's the other? Counselor Patterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and through you to the chief, and thank you for the the work, the service, and certainly all the report here. Just and I may have missed this on your last presentation, but planned accomplishments, the the purchase of the automated license plate reader. Could you just speak briefly about that, what what how it's implemented?
Chief Fisher?
So we're receiving a grant from ICBC that allows us to to make that purchase this year. What that does, it's a small unit that's mounted in inside a car, and it will carry a database of information on expired driver's license, license plates, et cetera, which is extremely handy now that there's no longer the DECO system on the license plate. So very difficult for an officer to determine just visually as we used to do on whether a license is expired or no insurance or something of that nature. So this reading instrument will actually scan license plates as they drive by or as we're going by them if they're parked. And then it will actually issue a little alert on a screen for the officer if there's something of interest within that database, and then the database is regularly updated, obviously. So just one more, both traffic enforcement, community safety tool that is is very effective in in many communities and gives us the option to do that. Officers that we have that are very traffic oriented are quite excited about us being able to to have one of these tools to use in one of our cars. So it'd be very interesting to see. The order's been placed for that. We're just waiting for it to to arrive.
Counselor Patterson?
Thank you for that information and good of ICBC to to fund this for us. But we just at municipal level, we see so much downloading of of services. So this has been funded initially. Is that going to be a continuous funding or do it's a replacement budget, the responsibility of the municipality?
Chief Fisher?
Through you, your worship. That's a that's a one-time funding envelope that was up to basically the amount that would allow us to purchase one and have it installed. There's no provision for any ongoing funding related to that. So if we speak about replacement, no, there's no provision within that funding grant for replacement. Upkeep should be minimal to none, because my understanding from other departments that have this tool. But yeah, replacement would be a whole nother request coming forward.
Thank you. Counselor Brithwaite?
Thanks. And just going to your performance measures and statistics page, one thing that jumped out to me was the false alarms. I mean, that's up 37% from from the previous year. And so my question, I guess, would be is, is there a reason why for that? And is there a charge to people for false alarms or if if there's a like an overabundance of false alarms to to one address?
Thank you, Counselor Brithwaite. I can admit that one of those was at my house, so hope there's no major fines. Go ahead, Counselor Chief Fisher.
The predominant reason for the rise was a couple of businesses that had repeated alarms, and it was actual malfunctions. One was a fan issue, and a fan is enough, depending on where it's placed, that they felt they had the alarm fixed, and they were making good efforts to do that. In some cases, you don't, and then you get into a discussion around the cost to policing for do that. In these instances, the two instances I'm referring to, in both instances, the the company had made efforts with the alarm company, thinking they had it resolved, and then we get into multiple calls. So that's the prime driver of that increase in those instances.
Thank you. And I would encourage people if they're interested, there's a strategic plan that came out that's that's much like the process we have here with certain metrics being tracked year over year. So there's a number of metrics being tracked. Annual report in the from the Police Department Police Board will be will be tracking a number of statistics as well. So both criminal but also other statistics of interest to kind of help map the effectiveness of the police department over time. I think it is it now. Chief Fisher, thank you very much. And we move on now to the fire protection. And following the fire protection, we will have any additional public questions or comments or anything, anything of interest to you? If you're online or watching on the on the YouTube channel, I would encourage if you do want to ask a question, call into the 1-855 number at this time. And you can hit star nine, that is star nine, not pound nine, star nine, to raise your hand within the 1-855 number. And we'll take those calls if there's any there. Welcome, Chief McDonald.
Thank you, worship. So just to highlight some of the accomplishments that are articulated in the introductory recruitment activities and onboarding of of its staff as it saw some some turnover, historically high. There was coordination of de-deescalation training for for the district. Mutual aid and auto aid agreements were renewed, and there were some IT enhancements and modernizations that allowed to the department to utilize its facilities to to its maximum potential on the upper floor. Some planned accomplishments next year, as mentioned, they'll be received with a temporary apparatus structure, a lot of work that's gone into that. And two new fire trucks will be on their way. The department will also be conducting mental health and resilience peer support training, conducting community risk assessment and updated emergency response and recovery plan. So having a look at the fire protection operating budget, a modest increase. Mind you, I just need to let council know that the collective bargaining increases for this department are anticipated elsewhere in the in the budget, and that's just that's just been the tradition here at the districts. Until those collective bargaining are the bargaining is complete, the increases aren't integrated into the core budget. But it is funded elsewhere in the district's budget. The the collective agreements are overdue, I believe, 2022, 2023 and 2024. Yep, the chief is nodding. That's great. So when we so we look at operating budget items above and beyond the core, council will be familiar with the Fire Master Plan Recommended Position Funding Increase. This year, council approved a point 75% increase, and then it's point 5% six point 56% thereafter until the eight FTEs are funded. This funding isn't dedicated to a specific position or two or anything like that. It's just spread the tax increase over the the life of the financial plan and front-loaded some of it per council's wishes. But that's approximately an extra two FTEs, I believe it was. Yeah, it was an extra two FTEs for this year. So thank you, your worship. That's the presentation for fire.
Thank you very much, Mr. Payne. Counselor?
Welcome. And I just wanted to ask on the performance measure, can you clarify two of them for for myself and the public generally? What constitutes a reportable fire to the Office of the Commissioner? I see that's up from 2022. And what constitutes fire and life safety inspections? And that seems to have taken a quite a large increase for 2023. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Green. Chief?
Through his worship to Counselor Green. No, thanks both. Excellent questions. And council may recognize that there's actually a bit of a reduction in some of the reporting measures as as a whole. We're trying to get things a bit more concise and consistently reportable. So on the on the measure of what is a reportable fire to the Office Commissioner? That is a standing reporting metric for all across the province. So we used to have fire loss, I think it was significant fire loss. But they we didn't actually have a reportable metric on what defined a significant fire. So we weren't able to have replicatable data as far as what we were reporting out on. So the the metric for the Office of Fire Commissioner is any fire that has any dollar loss down to $1 is a reportable fire. And then I think your next question was in regards to the fire and life safety inspections. So under the Fire Services Act, which is managed through the Office of the Fire Commissioner, the municipality has legislative responsibilities to conduct routine fire inspections, fire and life safety inspections on all businesses and multi-family occupancies within the the district or high-density buildings. We have approximately 407 inspectable properties for the district. We were under inspecting over the last, actually, over 10 years. And it's just this year that we've reached our acquired target, or actually 2023, we reached the acquired target. So out of those 407 inspectable properties, there are numerous ones that are required to be inspected twice a year, which is how we end up with with a a range that is somewhere between 650 to 700 in any given year, depending upon the change in any occupancy classification or business status. So hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have Counselor Patterson and then Brithwaite and Smart.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to follow up on that, the fire and life safety inspections, thank you for that information, Chief McDonald. Could now that now that you kind of brought the inspections up to the more desirable level that we are supposed to be meeting, out of the inspections that you did, did it, could you give us an idea of outcomes that were generated by those inspections? Were there a high number of follow-up actions or instructions issued during those inspections to just to bring it into compliance?
As this is a budget discussion, perhaps we just tie it also back to the impact on on staff time and so forth as well.
Through his worship to Counselor Patterson. I I don't have the specific numbers with regards to the number of re-inspections, but I but I can say due to the I'd say the latency period that we had with regards to getting up to our inspection standard, there were some inspectable properties that were in a significant state of repair that required some municipal task forces to actually get involved to bring things up to code, which in which cases I would say were were significant impacts for planning staff, bylaw, fire, police and non-municipal organizations.
Thank you. Counselor Patterson, anything else? Counselor Brithwaite and Smart?
Thank you. I answer you to to the chief. I'm looking at the University of Victoria Performance Measures, and I see that it's the calls to the University of Victoria have gone down by about 11%, which is nice. But then the the response to requests for assistance, can you explain exactly what that is? Because it's at zero, and so I'm assuming then that means that there was no request for for medical assistance. Or 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 would there have been, would that have been medical assistance that you would have been responding to or just alarms?
Through his worship, bit of a maybe a typographical error there. The the 74 is the response for request for assistance, so it's really, you know, baked into the response for assistance at the top. It just breaks out what are responses were for Uvic. And then I think where you see that in those 19s on the lower section, those were a carryover from previous years that were really inspectable numbers for the university, which are now captured in the fire and life safety inspections.
Thank you. I have Counselor Smart and then Appleton.
Yeah, thank you. Through you, Mayor, to Chief McDonald, I just wanted to have a little bit more elaboration on so fantastic to see the amount of fire and life safety inspections happening. And I wonder if you could elaborate a little bit on how you're able to do that, and yet it looks like the actual operating for fire prevention is is a little bit less, considering it seems like a greater scope of work. And I wondered if you could just detail that a little bit more. I'm I'm looking at two slides down on page 69, where it looks like the 2024 budget is is slightly less for fire prevention.
Chief?
Through his worship. Essentially, the 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 primary costs associated with the Fire Prevention Division is staff. We have maintained a a 1.0 FTE over the years through the Fire Prevention Division. However, it isn't hasn't been until recently that that FTE has been working or dedicated to fire prevention duties and not working on a fire truck to reduce overtime. So I think that helps illustrate how we have reallocated our resources and make sure that they're working in the right area. And we're now seeing the benefit on the public safety side with no additional cost from a budgetary perspective to that division.
Thank you. Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, worship, and through you to staff, picking up on something that the chief just mentioned. I'm curious, there's not a sort of an explicit reference or or breakdown of overtime costs in here. And I I sort of get the sense that it's been potentially maybe not an unusually challenging year, but a little bit of a challenging year as far as filling vacancies and bringing new people on board. And so I'm just kind of wondering from a general financial sense, how is that showing up in the budget as far as stretching to kind of fill spots? And are we did we experience an unusual year as far as retaining people? Or is that just consistent with the general issue of retaining people in all municipal services?
Thank you. Chief?
Through his worship, we did have a bit of a, you know, a challenging year with regards to our our eligibility list. So we've now run out of of candidates that we hire off of. So we're having to go through and and now start from scratch with a new recruitment process, which takes approximately six months to complete. We were a little fortunate in 2023 where we did have funding to hire a new assistant chief and a firefighter. Given the the incredible overtime experience that we'd had in 2022, we took the opportunity to sort of strategically hire two firefighters as early in 2023 as we could. So we were able to use those bodies because, you know, the cost of a firefighter relative to an assistant chief is significantly less. We were able to hire them that much earlier and keep our overtime numbers somewhat artificially low for as late into the year as we could. And then as we got into November, we actually were able to do an internal hire where, you know, we didn't have to hire an additional external. So we just did an internal posting, hired out of our suppression division and moved that individual into management. And that's how we were able to ultimately keep the overtime relatively low within the existing approved funding that we had for the 2023 budget. I hope that answers your question.
Anything else, Counselor Appleton?
Maybe just to follow up, your worship, and I appreciate the chief's context on this. I guess then what is the I'm interested in the idea of sort of having to running out of candidates on the eligibility list. Is there an is there an ongoing then impact to, you know, operations at at the fire hall? Is that going to be in sort of an ongoing area of concern as far as how much time goes into the HR aspects of bringing new people on board?
Through his worship, it is definitely taking up a significant period of time of our management team right now. There's no easy way around that right now. We we have tried to, where where possible, work with other municipalities to do consolidated hiring competitions with other municipalities. It wasn't really an option at this point because there is an interest to do a regional process, but it doesn't align with our our current immediate timelines. So we're trying to do an expedited competition. You know, we don't really have a choice but to make the investment. And we are definitely, you know, running lean, and we do also have a retirement pending, which is, you know, just going to further put some constraints on us. However, we are nimble. We are, you know, moving staff around to cover vacancies where possible to avoid overtime. But but it is going to be a period where I think we're going to be front-end heavy on overtime and hopefully on the on the. we're going to be front-end heavy on overtime, and hopefully on the, on the second half of the year, we will be extremely light to hopefully balance things out.
Thank you very much, chief. Uh, are there any other questions for Chief McDonald at this time? All right. Thank you very much. Uh, with that, I'm going to just take an opportunity for the public, if there's any questions to ask, uh, or anything we've covered so far, um, or anything coming up. I'm happy to just be as flexible as possible here in terms of our, uh, our inputs. Uh, we just wanted to give people the opportunity, they can also come back and talk to council at any future meeting as well. I was going to wait to see if any hands pop up online or in, in the room here. Not seeing any yet, but I'll give a second. Uh, I do want to just point out and thank you to, uh, Ms. Williams. I had the, uh, I knew I had the title right about the, uh, EBCM award for community excellence for, but it was for our, uh, and it tied into our budgeting process, but of course it was the, uh, specifically highlighted was our priorities, had these priorities, council priorities process, and, uh, one of our only people who isn't here tonight is, uh, Ms. Bay, uh, who is the author of that. So I just, uh, would like to make sure that we do, when I say that, but I'd like to, would have, you know, it's nice to have it in this report, uh, somewhere. It's, I just want to make sure that we, in this room, acknowledge, uh, that work and that, uh, and that recognition that was done from, from peers. Okay, that was it. Uh, anything, anybody, I don't see anybody else online, anybody else in the room want to talk to us now? No? Okay. We will move on then to the Community Building and Planning section, Mr. Payne.
Thank you, your worship. Okay, uh, thank you, your worship. I do believe Director Bowles is online, um, to assist with any questions after the presentation. Uh, some of the accomplishments, uh, highlighted in the document include the sidewalk patio program, uh, the MTI bylaw that was updated, uh, significantly, the housing action plan that's underway. In 2024, obviously significant work for this, uh, division responding to housing target orders and other housing-related, uh, legislation, the infill housing, uh, project, um, housing action plan, which would include updating the zoning bylaw, updating the official community plan, the amenity cost charges, development cost charges, and optimizing development processes through technological means, as well as the climate action plan, uh, objectives, uh, which would, uh, the climate action plans for the community and corporate admissions as well. Uh, so some significant, uh, work underway there. In terms of the, uh, operating budget schedule, just one moment here, I'll scroll to it there. Uh, you notice there are some, uh, budgeted increases to the, uh, the revenue. We are, you know, we're entering a, a sort of a new phase in terms of development applications, uh, since before, first of all, the fees were increased significantly, I would say, uh, last year, as well as the volume of applications that we're getting down, done due to new, due to new staffing is also increasing. So we're in a bit of a, a wait-and-see, but there are some clear applications that we can, um, that we have in the pipeline and we can predict, uh, increases for as well. Um, I will note we've got, you know, one major building permit, um, in twenty, that will occur in 2024, that's a, that's a building at, at Uvic. So that will, that will most likely produce a one-time, um, surplus in our building permit fees, but I haven't integrated it into ongoing operating budget because I didn't want to reduce taxes and then have to increase taxes when that one permit is, is no longer there. Uh, in terms of the expenditure, um, uh, the expenditure here is the larger variances in the planning, uh, division and the inspections divisions, uh, largely reflect last year's approved funding deferral. Council will recall a number of FTEs were approved last year, but only sixty-five percent of that funding was provided in last year's, and thirty-five percent of that funding was provided in this year's. Uh, so that, that, that's represented, uh, there. On the next page, we have the new operating budget items. I'll, I'll note a couple, I guess we're calling them tonight typographical errors. There is three FTEs being proposed as an increase to this budget. Point five, senior planner, one-point-zero, so it says one-point-five in error, climate action, one-point-zero planner, and zero-point-five building and planning curve. So I apologize that this one and this one say something different. Uh, that'll be corrected in the next version. However, if you do scroll to the, um, FTE schedule for the community and building and planning department. Oh, I'm sorry, one more page probably. Here you go. This is the correct accounting of the FTEs being, uh, proposed, and that exists in the department. I will note that these, um, the proposed FTEs in the department do have attached funding sources for it. Uh, the half an FTE, senior planning, would be funded by one-time grant, the growing community fund, because that would primarily assist with the housing action plan. Uh, the senior planner for climate action would be funded through the local government climate action program, uh, grant, which is something that council approved in 2023. And then, um, the, uh, the, the other FTE in, in planning would be a one-time, um, through the growing communities funds, and then the, uh, zero-point-five FTEs for the building and planning curve would be funded by increased development revenues, which has been integrated into the, uh, the forecast there. So I just caution council that the funding sources for some of these ongoing, um, positions are from one-time sources being the growing community funds, and that's to fund, uh, a lot of the effort to get the housing, uh, action plan, uh, uh, into, into good shape. So council will have to address that funding source at some point, uh, probably two or three years from, um, from the adoption of this. Uh, thank you, worship. That concludes my comments on this operating budget. As I mentioned, Mr. Bowles is online for any questions that you have, and I'm available as well.
Well, thank you. Um, through you, Mayor, to Mr. Payne, I just had a question with regards to the great example that you illustrated with the restructuring in, in, in your department, and I'm wondering if two to three years from now, when, um, we perhaps don't have the same workload in the planning, uh, department potentially, like, could we potentially foresee doing something with the planning department where it's been really consultant-heavy, but now we have these staff and we could potentially, um, I'm wondering how, how the funding change could work to move to a less consultant-heavy, um, planning department and utilizing the staff that we've potentially now trained for two or three years. I wonder if you could elaborate on, on how that might play out?
Sure. Thank you, Councilor Smart. I'll give it to Mr. Bowles, I think, is that, Mr. Payne, is that appropriate? And for those who are wondering, Mr. Bowles is our Director of Community Building and Planning, so he is head of that department. Go ahead, Mr. Bowles.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, can you hear me all right?
Can. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Through you, um, yeah, um, thinking about the long term and the future, um, it depends a bit what the type of work is like by that time. Um, I think the consultant, um, resources that we do have mobilized and are, and, and planning to use in the coming years are, are centered around the, uh, council priority projects. We are increasing, uh, in-house staff as well, but that's, um, uh, still at the level that, in, also in the future, I think, in the long run, unless we, uh, set up a, a larger community planning team, you would still rely on consultants there. And then for the, um, development planning part, that's also a bit of an unknown, uh, in terms of development applications review, um, because, um, um, we don't know exactly the volume in the future. There's also, uh, changes that we are going to make to, um, uh, our processes, uh, there's a project for that. So that's, that's a bit of an, um, a lot of variables there still at play that will need to be figured out in the future. Thank you.
Anything else, Councilor Smart? Okay. Uh, Councilor Appleton, then Brayth Wade.
Uh, thank you, worship, and through you to staff, just from a, just from a financial layout perspective, I guess, for some of these positions, and I, and I appreciate the breakdown on the new operating budget and the FTEs. The, as it references, and as Mr. Payne has alluded to, this is sort of a two-year timeframe to reevaluate. So I guess my question is, uh, does the five-year financial plan, is the five-year projection assume that the positions will continue? And I assume that it does. And from a functional perspective, um, and I did ask a similar question of Mr. Bowles the other night, and I don't want to retread it, but, um, at what point will council be able to weigh in on evaluating the, 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 the need for the ongoing position and where it's funded from? So I guess we're looking at, as Mr. Payne has said, it's about a two-year timeframe. What is the touchpoint for council and what sort of metrics would council be, maybe early days, but what sort of metrics would council be provided at that time to assess, uh, whether or not it's, it's ongoing, an, an ongoing need, I guess, as, as is alluded to in the budget, in the budget plan, basically saying, we understand that that position will be in ongoing need. How does council evaluate that?
Uh, thank you, Councilor Appleton. Uh, Mr. Bowles?
Uh, thank you. Through you, Mayor. Um, I, I think it varies a bit by position. Um, I think for the, uh, the, the senior planners that work on our council priority projects, uh, as these projects complete, uh, there will be the question, uh, what's next for, for, uh, those kind of roles? Is there other, other projects coming? We know that the village area planning, plan project, for example, is definitely scheduled for 2026. For the development planner role, um, uh, that's where, uh, I, I expect with our increased fees, and, and we keep, keep a close eye on that, there's probably revenue, and that it, it's, it also is closely related to the development application volume, so that's, that can be adjusted and evaluated on that basis. And then for the administrative role, um, um, that is already proposed to be funded by revenue, uh, but similarly, that depends a bit on the level of activity, both in development applications, building permits, but also the council priority projects and, and the level of support we might still need at that time. So I think, uh, from my perspective, that would be evaluated and also, uh, presented to you, uh, for your consideration every year when the budget comes around. Um, and maybe, Mr. Payne can add to that, how that would work, or if there's other options as well. Thank you.
And then you wish to add, Mr. Payne, or is that sufficient?
Uh, yeah, you, you're, through your worship, um, the one thing I would add is, first of all, it's a good question in terms of, um, what the five-year plan has, has assumed in there, and I, and I do believe for transparency, that would be a good thing to, to identify in the five-year plan, which isn't, isn't right now. And I do believe that it assumes after a couple of years, a tax increase. Um, and again, for tran- transparency, that should be placed in there because it is a bit of a decision, um, of council. But I do believe that the mechanism that Mr. Bowles has referenced, being the workforce plan, is the primary tool for council to be able to, to, uh, make those sort of decisions.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Brayth Wade?
Uh, thank you. And through you, Mayor, I'm actually looking, thinking we actually might need a little bit more help in one area, which is the bylaw compliance officer. So I'm, I'm, I was looking at that, thinking, gosh, with all of the new permits and this and that and the other thing coming up, is that not something where we may need more help in that area? So I was a little bit surprised not to see an ask for another, um, uh, even a part-time person to come in. Is there, is that, is that something that perhaps might come in, in the, in the next budget, perhaps? Or is that something that we, we are still contemplating that we might need for next year, depending on how many permits, et cetera, come forward?
Sure. Mr. Bowles, there's, there's two lines. One is, of course, the, the inspections, and one is, uh, bylaw enforcement. Maybe it's helpful just to, to speak to those two, because they do not overlap, but they, they kind of work together.
Uh, thank you. Uh, through you, Mayor, um, for the building permitting part, uh, we did add capacity there last year, and that, that is, seems to work well, and, um, and, and we first need to see if, if building permit volumes go back up before we need to consider additions there. For the bylaw compliance officer, definitely, uh, on, uh, our radar to look at that. This year, it still looks like we're, we're at capacity and that it should work out, but it's definitely on my radar to look at that closely later this year for next year, and, uh, anticipate something bringing forward then. Uh, in comparison to the current needs, it's, it's not as pressing as the other ones that we are proposing for this year. So that's a bit of the reasoning behind the, the current proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have a, a kind of a general question, and I'm not sure how, how well you can answer it, but I know, generally speaking, because we can't run deficits and, uh, by the nature of being government, we tend to, yeah, with best practices, assume full funding and, um, you know, take, take low estimates in terms of revenue and, and higher in terms of cost, just to make sure that we can cover those pieces. I'm just trying to get a sense, I mean, the, looking at this, it feels a little conservative, and, and this was, I think, addressed in an earlier comment from Mr. Taylor in the audience here about the, uh, how much revenue increase and so forth might come. I'm just trying to get a sense from you, Mr. Bowles, you know, do you feel, you know, comfortable with these, and do we have any sense of what the, what the deviation might be? So if there was a significant uptick in, um, in building permit applications, uh, does that, would it largely be offset by addition, requiring sort of some temporary staff to come in and help out? Uh, would those revenues, uh, vary? Just maybe some sense of, of how variable some of these assumptions are?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, um, it is indeed variable, and, and what we don't know, the big unknown really is if the infill housing program is going to result in a high volume or a steady volume or low. Uh, right now, um, the current estimates are mostly based on last year and, uh, in translating that to this year, with a little bit of a component for, for new type of permit, but it's mostly, this is existing trends happening already, and, and, uh, the increase that you see on the screen there for development permits, that's the effect of the increased fees from last year. And, um, um, yeah, so that is, um, it fluctuates. Uh, we do know, we do see for this year that we already have received additional rezoning applications like we did last year. That is something new. We used to only get one or tw- two a year, and last year we had about six or seven, I believe, and this year we're already at four or five as well. So there's an, an uptick there that eventually will translate to building permitting revenue as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and I, I know we're undertaking a, a, a building permit application or, or process streamlining, uh, piece of that. Is any of that expected to complete before the end of the year? Would we see and understand the results of that in years going forward more?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, there's one piece in the works that's close to being launched, so we'll be able to see what the results are later this year. That's a, um, a different method, eApply is the name for it, but basically for plumbing permits, it's a more digital, uh, process about application intake. So that's one of the early, uh, changes that we're going to test, and, uh, we're also working on a bigger project to, uh, take that wider look throughout the whole development applications, uh, review process. So there's going to be other changes that probably will be implemented next year. Uh, but some of that will, will start to, to know and understand better what the impact might be of those changes.
Great, thank you. And my last question is, um, where in the budget is the sort of reflected things like development cost charges, amenity cost charges, or the community amenity charges that are, um, that come along with some new development? Uh, do we, do we budget any of those in our budget? Mr. Payne?
Uh, through your worship, uh, not, not at this time. So when the DCC program and the ACC program is, is developed, we will integrate some, uh, some, um, forecasts. But keep in mind, any revenue earned from ACC or DCCs has to be transferred to a reserve. So it's not like it's a type of revenue that can be used to fund operations, it's, it's all, uh, capital anyways. So we take that revenue, we can budget for it, but it's just going somewhere else right away anyways.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. It's helpful. Don't see any other hands here for questions? Oh, Councilor Appleton?
Thank you, worship, and just to follow up from my earlier question, I appreciate Mr. Payne's comments on sort of like a, a capturing, uh, further taxation in, in, uh, implications of the positions that are formed. So from what I'm understanding, then if the current financial plan, if the current proposed financial plan projects retention of those positions past the two-year timeframe, um, then is it possible in, in the same way that there is a multi-year? And granted, I understand that this has been already approved by council and already discussed by council, but in the same way, that the multi-year tax implications of, say, like the fire, the additional fire, uh, uh, services, whether something similar could be projected for these positions as well? Because if I understand correctly, if the financial plan were, uh, approved as presented here, then it would commit us to a future tax increase beyond that two-year timeframe.
Mr. Payne?
Uh, through your worship, yeah, I really, um, I think to be consistent with how we present the financial plan and the cost drivers, this is, this is the relevant slide. the financial plan and the cost drivers, this is the relevant slide here, and it's the chart that would appear. And I just had a look in the financial plan, and it does assume a tax increase for the, when the elimination of that one-time funding happens in the financial plan. And what you would want to see is it identified in here, because it's not just a forced growth, it is new staffing essentially. And I don't believe currently it is reflected in this column. And I think to be consistent, it should be, is what I'm saying. So 2027 and 2028 would be the relevant years for that.
Thank you. Maybe I'll just do a follow-up on this more general question, and maybe more profoundly directly to Ms. Williams as the CAO. We have, separate from this, some discussion around department by department, some of the, just like the staffing models and things going forward, discussions over the future years and just predicting out when we might need. We've done it with fire, we've done a little bit with community building and planning. There's a, is there any mechanism, maybe probably not this year, but I'm just wondering, that might be helpful as a visual to kind of have an understanding of what is sort of planned as part of the budgeting piece going forward? Because I think what I'm hearing here is some concern, is that if it may be rolled up into a single number of new staff, but it's hard for us necessarily to see what that looks like if it's, you know, the staff are perhaps being hired in one year but may not come onto that new staff payroll because they're covered by some other section in current years. I'm just wondering if there's sort of a mechanism that we can, I don't know if we have the data yet, at this point, for all the departments to really have a really thorough plan for future needs on staffing, but is that something that we have yet and is something we might get in the future? Ms. Williams? And for those who are watching online, Ms. Williams is our chief administrative officer.
Thank you, worship. And through you to rest of council. Yes, workforce planning is something that we plan on having in place for the entire organization. Mr. Bull and his team have jumped out in front and done some great work on trying to establish what their plan would or could look like over the next few years, which, as you've seen, is a challenging horizon, given there's a lot of unknowns about what things are going to look and feel like in two years' time or three years' time in the planning world and the building inspection world. But yes, that is something that will be coming forward as a part of our regular reporting and budgeting process, is a workforce plan. And we are constantly looking at, as a leadership team, looking at where the need is in each department and prioritizing that before we come to council, as the team who absolutely has their finger on the pulse of the day-to-day operations here. You know, we do that legwork before we come to council. And just to touch back on the positions that were on the table for discussion a few minutes ago, those positions were sought last year through budget based on known workloads prior to the housing target order, and were not fully approved. So we have no expectation that the need for those positions will diminish over time.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions in terms of budget or in your aspects for the building and planning department at this time? Seeing any, so let's move on, Mr. Payne, to our engineering and public works.
Thank you, worship. Okay, so to touch on some of the accomplishments in the engineering and public works department from 2023, pavement condition assessment was conducted as well as the sidewalk condition assessment. There was the light update to the active transportation plan, some major capital works and tenders, and, you know, some record tenders issued. Well, what was the record in 2023 got beat in 2024 pretty quick. And also, a maintenance management program was developed as well. Looking forward into 2024, the department's still focusing on those major capital works and the capital output, developing a streetlight replacement program, a lay-down site for Harrow Road, that would be for the contaminated soil or the soil remediation program, yard improvements, and also developing a capital project prioritization framework so council can, and the community can have greater insight into how capital projects and risk management is conducted in the engineering department. Now, when we look at the engineering and public works operating department, you see some pretty standard increase across the board. One of the cost drivers underlining a lot of the variances would be our equipment cost increase. The way that we fund our fleet is essentially by charging out the cost of that fleet to the various departments across the district, including the engineering and public works. In there, you have a calculation of what we think the insurance costs are going to be, what the gas and fuel costs are going to be, and the parts and labor, and also what we think the replacement cost of that equipment is going to be. So that when we charge it out through the district and we fund this operating department, we're also funding the replacement of that equipment fund. And that's one reason why you see that, you know, we made a lot of large-scale equipment replacement purchases using that reserve fund over the last couple of years. So the major cost driver of that equipment rate has really been the replacement cost of vehicles. Vehicle and equipment replacement went up significantly over the COVID times, so we've been increasing that rate by 10%, and that's what's affecting a lot of these variances here. We also increased it by 10% last year, and prior to that, it was 5%. In the 2025 through 2028 columns of this financial plan, it's a 5% increase as well. In terms of new operating budget, there's two new operating budget requests. Council has effectively approved the contaminated soil fund. I believe there's a robust discussion on how to fund the new contaminated soil regulations, whether it be by user fee or whether it be by taxation, and part of it at least was landed on taxation. So that's been integrated, as well as a new service being proposed for graffiti removal and beautification. Beautification being a term, you know, maybe the director of engineering public works can describe it better, but making the sidewalks look good, I think, from a, maybe not an infrastructure perspective, but from an aesthetic perspective. Would that be a fair description? I'm getting some nods there. So that's good. So now, I don't go into detail in this presentation about the water and sewer utilities because the rates are approved in early November, and the budgets that support those rates haven't changed. So I haven't prepared a presentation there, but more than happy to answer questions if you have any questions about also the sewer and water utility budgets in the financial plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Payne, and welcome to the meeting, Mr. Robertson. For those online, Mr. Robertson is our director of engineering and public works. Is there any questions? And then Appleton?
Thank you, your worship, and through you too. It might be to Mr. Robertson. I just wanted to check in about the contaminated soil fund again. Mr. Payne was just reminding us that, of our discussion, and about user fees versus taxation to support the regulatory changes. Is it, can you refresh my memory? Is that $300,000 essentially what we need to hold permit fees constant for the same kind of activity while we, through the tax base, pick up the cost of setting the soil aside and doing the required testing? Is that what we're estimating we would need in our first year and subsequent years? Or, yeah, if you could just comment on that, because I've kind of forgotten the bits.
Sounds good. Mr. Robertson?
Through the mayor. This is the cost that we're estimating in the first year, and as we track costs, then we'll be able to update it for 2025. And it's the additional cost of handling, sampling, testing, and then remediating at different sites on the island where that soil has to go to. So the additional cost over what it would have been prior to May 2023. And that is, just to finish, sorry, and that is for services that we're installing or services that we're replacing.
Thank you. Councilor Appleton? And then what, then Smart?
Thank you, worship. And through you to staff. And just as was made reference by Mr. Payne, there's been some fairly significant, as I recall in my time on council, there's been some significant investments in new engineering vehicles, equipment, and those types of things, over a million dollars, I think, the year before last. And just wondering how that is manifesting itself in operating costs. I would just assume that, you know, newer equipment reduces our costs in terms of fuel consumption efficiency and repair costs. And I'm just wondering, what order of magnitude are we seeing an improvement in that regard?
Mr. Brozek, you may be called forward here. And for those online, Mr. Brozek is our manager of public works. Nice to see you here.
Nice to see you guys. Through you, your worship. You would expect that with newer pieces of equipment, that your operating cost would be quite a bit lower. For some pieces of equipment, yes, say pickup trucks and smaller-sized vehicles, like two or three-ton vehicles. But once you get into those larger pieces of equipment nowadays, like the tandems or hydrovac machines, the complexity of those machines when you're doing the maintenance, the maintenance costs actually are increasing significantly. For example, if you have a, sorry, if you have a older tandem dump truck, and you're replacing its transmission or clutch system, when you're with the older vehicle, it would take you a day, half a day to do. But today, with all the newer technology, it'll take you actually two, three days because of the electronics that are involved and the computer systems. And also, those parts are much more expensive as well.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilor Appleton.
Yeah, just, and thank you, Mr. Brozek, for that. Just maybe a follow-up. I think it would bring me some concern. I think certainly the complexity of everything, you know, in terms of vehicles and equipment, is accelerating quickly. And it would bring me some concern if, as we've seen in a lot of different situations, that this machinery becomes non-user maintainable. I know we maintain a lot of our own equipment, a lot of our own vehicles, and use our own forces to do that type of work. And I'm wondering whether there's a trend towards equipment which is not user serviceable, or to maintain warranty and things of that nature needs to be maintained specifically by the provider or by the supplier. I would hope that if that became the case, then council would be able to have an opportunity to provide direction on where we acquired equipment such that we could avoid that wherever possible. But that's just my viewpoint on it. But to what extent is that what we're seeing with our own equipment that we're purchasing?
Mr. Brozek?
We do definitely evaluate all the pieces of equipment that we're purchasing. We look at the warranties, we look at projected costs for their maintenance. We're constantly upgrading our mechanics qualifications. For example, we're looking at getting electronic or more electric fleets. So that means all new tools, all new training for our mechanics. We've been sending our mechanics recently on how to service electric vehicles, things like that. So we're looking long-term at, you know, upgrading our staff so that we can continue doing the inspections and continue doing the maintenance on the vehicles, and doing it at a much lower cost than if we were to take them outside of our facility.
Thank you. I have Councilor Smart. Braithwaite?
Thank you. One of my questions was answered already, but I just wanted to make another request this year for the performance metrics to include bicycle lanes completed. I'd love to see that metric indicated. Thanks.
Councilor Smart, Councilor Braithwaite?
Thanks, Mayor. My question is around the new service graffiti removal and beautification. I understand what graffiti removal is. I'm wondering what beautification is. I might have a good idea, however, because I do notice that that's a new line item for us, and that's about a, if my calculations are correct, it's about a 0.4% increase in taxes. Is that correct? Yes, I'm seeing a nod. So my question is, my first question is, what's beautification? And my second question is, as far as graffiti removal goes, if the police are able to find out who the person was that did the graffiti, do we get money? Is there any chance of getting money from that person for, to help with the removal?
I'll let Mr. Robertson answer the first one, and Chief Fisher answer the second one.
Beautification depends who you're talking to. But in this case, it's been noted the condition of the sidewalks, again, not speaking structurally, but from an aesthetic standpoint, grass growing, weeds growing through the joint between the sidewalk and the curb, or the curb and the road, which, if not dealt with over a period, can actually start to impact the structure of the sidewalk. So there's a unit that we would be building that uses a high-temperature soap water solution at a high temperature, and it looks much like a carpet shampoo. But it's very effective in, and doesn't use any harmful chemicals. It's basically just soap, and it's able to kill the weeds quite quickly, and the grow back is between two to three years. So it's not a quick job, but it's done by hand. But it's, I've used it before and seen it, and we've tested it here. We've seen it to be quite effective.
Thank you. I'm just going to do a quick follow-up to that question before I turn to the other speakers. There are other aspects of beautification I noticed, like in our village, the garbage cans are sort of grungy and unpainted and those sorts of things. Are those things done by public works, or is those things done by engineering or by parks?
Through your worship, it's done through a combination of parks and public works.
Okay. But that's not what we're talking about here specifically. We're talking more about, and those are not just aesthetics, because they're quite tripping hazards in many cases for the weeds that are growing up. So, okay. Thank you. Yep. And the second part of the question, Chief? Can we recover those costs?
So if there's a criminal charge laid, then within the report to Crown Council, if there's a submission around costs either incurred by the municipality or private business owner, depending on the case, then often that can be part of the submission goes forward to the court, and then the court makes a decision. If the person's found guilty in sentencing, that could potentially be part of the sentence, is a restitution order of some sort around costs. And then in the other case, sometimes, depending on the nature of the vendor and the history of them, in some cases, you'll see that type of offense go to a restorative justice process to keep it out of the courts, particularly if it's involving youth, which it isn't all the time, which surprises some folks. It's not always youth that's involved in graffiti. But in those instances, with a restorative justice-type hearing, that's another option that we can put forward to the facilitator. It isn't always guaranteed that's what's going to happen at the outset, but we do have input into that as well, or at least the victim does.
Thank you. I have Councilor Green, Patterson, then Meath, and Watson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And through you to Mr. Robertson and Mr. Brozek, whomever would like to answer. I was looking at the staffing history and forecast, and I know that there are a total of 46 and a quarter FTEs for 2024, but I'm thinking there's a lot of pressure on this particular department, not only currently, but in the future. And for public works and engineering, we have high expectations as we move along. And I'm just wondering, is that sufficient capacity, do you feel? And it's, you know, and this is a terrible joke, but it's where the rubber hits the road in this department. But is that a capacity issue in your view as we look forward? Because forecasting for work in infrastructure and across the municipality, it sounds like a huge workload. And expectations on the part of the public are high in this regard, so I just wanted to ask that question generally. And I will understand if you can't fully answer it right now, but it was a concern of mine that I wasn't sure the FTE count was perhaps enough, given the potential workload. Thank you.
Mr. Robertson?
That's a good question. We are just starting a review of public works, looking first at what are the requirements of the services we provide. So for instance, flushing water mains, it's a regulatory requirement of how many, how much of our system we do each year, or much of our system we do each year or a number of things like that. So there's a regulatory requirement for some of our infrastructure and frequency that we need to maintain it. For some, it's an industry standard, but it's not necessarily regulatory. And then the third category is local expectations. So we're going to be looking at this very comprehensively and establish those, those type of drivers and then how many FTEs it would take to do each function to the level that it's either required or we expect it to be at. And then based on that, we'll be able to review our existing staffing and see where the gap is. And our goal is to bring that to council for next year's budget, because it'll be quite a bit of work over this year. But that's our, that's our goal is to have that in place because indications are, there is, there is a gap there, given the state of the infrastructure. And although a lot of effort and resources have been put into the capital program, which is fantastic, our, our biggest part of our role is to maintain the existing system until the capital project comes to that street. And that's what we're going to be looking at, is that sort of gap, is how do we, how do we provide the service level until the replacements can happen? So that's, that's our timeframe when we'll be looking to bring back something.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Councilor Green. I have Councilor Patterson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And through you to our Director of Engineering, just a bit of a follow-up on that. Mr. Payne Wisely always includes in our budget the, the full budgeting for what our desired complement of staff is, which is good, because then we plan for it. But I am wondering in Public Works, I also, you know, understanding the dynamics of what we want to take on and, and new assets and all of these. But I'm wondering too, of the complement there that is, is listed in, in Public Works, what the rate of full staffing is to, to any vacant positions? And perhaps attrition that will be coming up in the near future.
Thank you, sort of historically or a point in time, because they might just both. Well, you answered the question, is he fit, Mr. Robertson?
I'll ask Mr. Brozek to add, add to my comment if there's more to be said. Yeah, there's, you know, over the past year, I think in discussions, I can remember several staff who have left for other work elsewhere or have retired. And there's always a big lag because there's such a shortage of skilled workers these days. So there's usually, there's usually a significant lag in being able to attract somebody with the skill set we're looking at. So I don't know if it's more than three or four at a, at a year, but probably in that neighborhood.
Thank you. My question was already answered, so I will go the second time, and that is Councilor Watson.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to Mr. Robertson, please. I just have a question about, I don't see this in the 2023 accomplishments for the department or the planned ones, and maybe I misunderstood things last year, but I thought that one of the projects that was underway or needed to be funded was purchase of software that the professional engineers were, were going to be populating, GIS-based software they're going to be populating for infrastructure mapping. And I, maybe I misunderstood that last year, but is that a project that's underway? And if so, where does it appear? Where would that be reported in the budget in terms of the cost implications of either the purchase of the software or the, or the work?
Sure. Mr. Robertson?
Just want to make sure we're, we're talking about the same thing. Is this to do with the asset management and system and tracking the work to the, to the infrastructure and maintenance works and?
Councilor Watson?
Possibly, although I thought that, I'll give you an example of where I thought it was being used. I understand that when we were, when staff were designing the McNeil Project Phase One, that it was because of that information that we discovered as a municipality, that there was infrastructure work that really needed to be done and should come first, because some activity had occurred to make that more obvious to us. And I thought that was related to this particular mapping project. But maybe it is on the asset management side. I'm not sure. If you could.
Sure. Let's turn it to Mr. Robertson.
Yes, through the mayor. We have, like, we are, we are finishing a couple of condition assessments, master plans. I think the storm one is the last one. We're trying to wrap up on the master plans. It would be the knitting together of all that information into a combined database where we have that. And we're not there yet. That is something that would be, we'd probably be looking at for 2025. So right now, we're looking at a lot of different places, but that overlap is, in a, in a program is something that we'd be looking at.
Okay, so I shouldn't have expected to see it in 2023 or '24 accomplishments. It'll be, we'll be hearing about it next, probably this time next year. All right. Thank you.
You, Councilor Watson. Is there any other questions of engineering Public Works at this time? Yeah, I'll take a question from the, look, you would like to leave, so I'll certainly allow public questions to come forward. Mr. Brozek, you can either move down or have a seat. Yeah. Welcome back, Maggie Knight-Oakley.
I was just wondering about the performance measures. And it makes a lot of sense that it's talking about what has, you know, what has been done in terms of infrastructure. But I'm wondering where that gets tied into results in terms of safety? So if there are investments that are meant to improve safety, you know, where are their stats on injuries or fatalities within the district's facilities and roads and all of that? Maybe that's not the place that it goes here, but I'm interested in knowing, knowing that piece. If that's somewhere, I know there's some ICBC data, but I don't know how that easy that is to really connect. And I'm also wondering, I saw that in terms of the metrics, there's no uptick in sidewalk replacement activity. And I'm forecast for this year, and I'm wondering if that's just waiting on the pedestrian and sidewalk master plan, which the website has last updated something in 2022. And I think I saw some reference to a draft in 2023, but I'm interested in when we expect that to emerge. And, yeah, and is that weighing on the condition assessment before any major changes would happen? So we would be seeing that in 2025 or later? Is that correct?
Sure. Thank you. I'll pass those questions on to staff. First up is the safety data, and it may, it may turn over to the police as well on this one, but if you can answer the question, Mr. Robertson?
Yes, through the mayor. We don't actively track accident statistics and that sort. Where we do have concerns that are raised or we're looking at doing a design, we will get the ICBC data. And that's, that's the database that we usually pull from to inform us of, if a concern's been brought forward, do the stats back up that concern? And we don't do any looking at before, after that I'm aware of, but I've been here yet a short time.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson on that one. And the second one was just a question on the sidewalk. Did the police want to add anything on the safety measure pieces?
I can add on measurements.
You'd have to come forward to the microphone here. Just got too many people around. Microphone? Just turn the mic, there we go. One more time.
Okay, there we go. I can speak to metrics in regards to pedestrian collisions, injury collisions in the community, and total collisions as far as road safety as well as cyclists being injured. And those measurements and metrics are also reflected in our new strategic plan, which your worship mentioned earlier as a priority. And that's based a lot on public input and their desire on traffic enforcement and road safety in the community. So from '22 to '23, our pedestrian injury collisions dropped from six to two, which is obviously a significant drop. Injury collisions in the community went from nineteen to sixteen in 2023. And then total number of collisions dropped from 105 to 94. Number of injured cyclists remained the same at five year to year, and that's actually consistent, '21, '22 to '23.
I will point out, as we noted this in the, in the police board discussions, how hard it is to do statistics when you have numbers like five, because one additional or less makes a 20% difference in the, in the piece. But the other question was here around sidewalk work. Mr. Robertson?
Yes, through the mayor. We are just in the final stages of receiving a report on condition assessment, which was started towards the end of 2023. We have the sidewalk and pedestrian master plan. So we're going to be putting those two together to get a picture of our priorities. And we have also put a request, starting in this 2024 capital budget going forward, for new funding for sidewalk replacement, based on those two, those two different documents that we've, we're just about finished.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Follow-up question, please go ahead, Ms. Knight.
And then I think this is probably another piece of data that doesn't exist well, but would it be correct to assume that we don't have good data on user data by mode of travel? We don't really know number of automobiles, cyclists, pedestrians and so on. Because of course, ideally, you're not just looking at the absolute number, but you're looking at the rate of accident based on, so you know, if you make beautiful new bike lanes that more people want to use, you might have slightly more accidents, but it would, might be actually a lower rate that's still safer for cycling. I'm assuming we just don't have that data and that it would be expensive to collect that in a regular way, and so we're not going to have that data. Would that be correct?
I can say, like, we don't collect that data directly. There is the CRDs, there's a transportation demand plan that uses it as all the districts. I think it's every five years, I think, is what they do that. I could be wrong. Mr. Robertson?
Yeah, I'm not sure of the timeframe, but that's who I believe we rely on for those type of statistics.
See, I think you'll probably see more statistics coming from that, maybe more frequently. The, the CRD has invested a fair bit of time and energy to boost up some of the transportation services as part of that. There isn't a lot of direct jurisdiction that the CRD has over transportation. So a lot of what they're looking at is providing, looking at providing some additional data regionally to help guide some of the policies, decisions that happen in the region, perhaps take over some of those responsibilities in the future, but that's to be seen. Thank you. I don't see any other questions from members of council? Mr. Robertson? Mr. Brozek? And Councilor Smart?
Yeah, just one more question through you, Mayor, to staff. I guess I just was wondering, and I realize we're going to have this discussion later more with, with capital, but if, if we do end up in increasing, when we see our implementation plan for active transportation, if we do end up increasing that, is there a point in which that scope moves from being more of a council priority project to something that's more core services and may actually impact the operational budget long-term if we're going to ramp up our active transportation infrastructure?
Mr. Robertson?
Through the mayor, yes. For instance, if we put in separated, physically separated bike lanes, we will need maintenance equipment that can fit in those bike lanes, narrow sweepers such as Victoria, City Victoria has purchased. Also, equipment that can do de-icing. I'm not sure about plowing because there's limited effectiveness there, but at least de-icing. And then there's increase just in lane markings, green paint markings, and damaged bollards and all that sort of stuff. So there would be an increase. Some would be fairly significant as those pieces of equipment aren't inexpensive and some relatively inexpensive.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, I think we're done here. I, just on behalf of council, thank you very much both for the work. I, I don't know if people, I know it's in our ever-increasing amount of money spent on infrastructure, but just, this work has gone on behind the scenes here of staff to build a very talented team to manage these projects and bring them online. The, I really, we had a great presentation, if you haven't seen it, in February 26th, that, that covered off the sort of the challenges of, of major capital projects and, and what's gone into that and what the, what the, what the team responsibilities are internally and externally for contractors and how it's being run. You should have to get a sense of how complicated scaling up this work is. So if you didn't have a chance to see that, the presentation is still online or is part of our agenda package, you can go look at it. But I just want to express our thanks, Mr. Robertson, Mr. Brozek, for your teams that are out there day and night digging holes and fixing the infrastructure. Definitely, I noticed there's zero water line replacements in the last couple of years, but in fact, there's been probably at least 30 meters, but they've just been replaced like two meters at a time as they break and we fix them. So, thank you very much. Moving on, we move to park, recreation and culture. Mr. Bee? Yeah, okay. I'm just, we're just going to have a quick five-minute recess, just to let people stretch their legs and if they have to use a washroom or anything. And we'll be back here at eight, or sorry, 9:52.
Okay, everyone, our five minutes are up. We're gonna call this meeting back to order.
I don't want to cut off Mr. Meekel in Park Track and Culture, but I, I do want to try and wrap this up. So I think, and I'm meeting to extend this for half an hour and no more than that.
Some moved second.
We'll try and wrap it up faster than that. So moved and seconded. If people don't want to stick around, I'd be happy if you need to leave early. Just maybe you can, you can, you can leave, but if we don't have unanimous vote, then this doesn't get to be extended. So, all those in favor? Any opposed, none opposed? That carries? Well, our last person on the agenda from a staffing perspective is Mr. Meekel from Park Track and Culture. Ms. Dupain, please provide the introduction.
Talk about some of the accomplishments from twenty-twenty-three, just to name a few. Three-quart bubble heating was, was replaced with a much more energy-efficient system. There was a new purchase and deployment of electric ice resurfacer. This staccoya sculpture at Cattle Point was installed, and there's some updates to the urban forest management plan, just to name a few. Moving into twenty-twenty-four, the department plans to initiate the Park Track and Culture master planning exercises, as well as replace the pool de-humidifier, which is a significant capital project, I believe over a million, million dollars there. Continue down the Conarven Park design project plan, install floating borewalks at Upland Park, and start replacing equipment. There's a robust equipment replacing budget proposed in the, in the capital budget. Looking at the operating department, I'm just gonna, operating and budget department. We've got a lot of financial statistics here just because of the, the current situation there. So if you look at the overall net budget increase at the very bottom line here, seventy-one thousand dollars, if you really think about that, that's seventy-one thousand dollars in almost a fifteen-million-dollar expenditure line, which is actually phenomenal from a net basis. Or if you look at it from the, from the net property tax component of six-point-four million dollars, again, really small component, only about a one, one-point-one percent increase, which does, which does paint the picture of improving revenues and, and that the tax funding requirement grew slower than the forest growth factor, three-point-four percent. So that's positive. We're still not, you know, at, at the financial performance pre-COVID, but trending in the right direction. There's many increases you'll notice to operating budgets and programs along here. We've gone through the effort of highlighting all of the ones that have significant increases that are also offset by at least equal revenue increases. So anything here with a little one, a one there, has, has offsetting revenue increases as well. So you would, you would expect both sides of the equation to increase as a result. So some of those, some of those divisions are the Henderson Fitness, Oak Bay Rec Center Fitness Arena, Food Services Tennis, Monterey Center and other. All of those increases had offsetting revenue increases as well. Other notable, other notable increase is the, and decreased part of me in the revenue side would be the aquatics, which is due to a eight-week shutdown, I believe, yeah, eight-week shutdown this year. So that's why you're seeing that variance there. So approximately one-point-two-million-dollar gap as the COVID-nineteen grant is expected to be used up. If, if our year-end actuals in twenty-twenty-four were similar to kind of the budget variance that we've been seeing recently, it would actually be closer to about six-hundred-thousand dollars, meaning that, you know, half of the COVID restart grant would be, would be left there. So if council were to choose to fund that gap with a, a tax increase, it could likely be phased over a couple of years, but council should be presented with different options, not just including tax increases. So we are noticing the volume is rebounding, and staff have internally assessed the likelihood of increased revenues as well as the strength of what those revenues are, much like last year, we included a, a risk chart that denotes that. I'm just gonna put it here. As you're aware, the district is undergoing a Parks Track and Culture economic analysis. Just to repeat the objective of what that economic analysis is, it's to identify potential revenue streams whereby an increase in that revenue wouldn't decrease demand so much that the revenue would, would decline. So are there user fees that can be increased that would increase overall revenue without the offsetting demand also declining? And there's other considerations. It's, that's purely financial, but there's also accessibility considerations when it comes to Parks Track and Culture as well. So you'll note that in this risk chart, that the Monterey Center of Fitness Indoor Sports Field, there is some capacity and likelihood of greater revenue. Mr. Meekel and I have received the first draft of the parks economic analysis. We're just reading through that draft right now, providing some input and inviting some input. And we do expect that the consultants will be able to present the findings of that to council in the next couple of months. And then when, once that happens, staff will likely look for direction from council to come back with options, options being tax increases, service adjustments, and/or user fee increases, or a combination thereof. Thank you, Your Worship. That concludes the operating budget presentation for Parks Track and Culture.
Couple of questions. Food services, it looks like food services has, actually is looking a lot better than it ever has ever before. Is that, am I reading that correctly, Mr. Meekel? And maybe you can touch on that.
Welcome, Mr. For those at home, I think I may have introduced already, but Mr. Meekel is our director of Parks Recreation and Culture. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Worship, and through you to Counselor Braithwaite. Yeah, food services in general has improved. Our concerts certainly up in the Sports View Lounge have been a real benefit and have been proven to be very popular since the pandemic. It seems to be a place where people feel quite comfortable to be together in, in that space. And we've also seen some improvements at Monterey as well, so food services there get kind of lumped into those, those equations. Part of that, Monterey is often more related to food quality, and, and we've had a great chef in twenty-twenty-three who unfortunately has just left us, but we've managed to get a new chef as well this year, so hoping for the same results there. But yeah, have seen continued improvement there. I will also note, and just anecdotally, I was, we were very busy at lunch today. Lunchtimes have also picked up as well, so.
Thank you so much. Yeah, and I noticed that Monterey Center, I mean, that, that looks like there's gonna be a, a thirty-eight percent change predicted for the revenue, on the revenue side. So is that just because we're coming out of COVID and people are more inclined to, to attend at Monterey now?
Mr. Meekel?
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you to Counselor Braithwaite. That's our impression, yes. It's taken a little bit longer. There was a bit of a lag, we noticed, with participants returning to Monterey Center. It seemed to take a little bit longer. It is primarily the older population, but they are, people are starting to come back now, and what we've seen is increased interest in registered programs, and we're seeing actually a bit of a decreased interest in kind of the club programs there. So people seem more interested in the more structured, highly more structured programs, and that seems to be giving a benefit there. We're still not back to pre-COVID levels in terms of the membership numbers at Monterey, but participation in actual programs is, has been increasing.
Please continue.
Thank you. I just have two more questions. My, my next question is about library board. I don't ever remember seeing that line in, in, in the revenue category. Is it, is it, do we get a payment from the library board for space or something? I, I'm not sure what it is.
Mr. Meekel?
Thank you, Your Worship. I, I'm not a hundred percent sure either. I believe it is, is a, a payment for maintenance services that we provide, given we have maintenance staff on at Monterey Center, and I think they cover some costs of some equipment and maintenance there. So I believe it's just a reimbursement.
So it's not because Andrews, their counselor, or Counselor Appleton is the board chair? We're not just moving money over there?
Not that I'm aware of, but I'm working on that.
And then my last question is, under the, the contracted arborist services, I, I see that we have, we're increasing by one arborist, which is great, because I think we definitely need that. And then the contracted arborist services, I'm assuming that we must spend so much on contracted arborist services right now, that that's what's constituted us getting an actual new full-time employee as, as an arborist.
Mr. Meekel?
Correct. It's a little bit of, as we discussed in, in presenting the, the next five years of the urban forest strategy. So it's a little bit of both. Where the new arborist position we're recommending really is focused on nurturing the new trees we've planted, and we've been fairly ambitious, although I will mention in the performance measures, we've, we're not quite as ambitious as twenty-one thousand trees planted last year. We didn't go from a hundred and fifty-two to twenty-one thousand, just to be clear. But really, the new arborist position is meant to, to bring those new trees along and to prune them and, and maintain them so that over time, we're decreasing the amount of maintenance that we need to do in the longer term with those trees, whereas we use the contracted arborist services to, to deal with and work with more of the older trees and deal with some issues there. So it's a bit of a combination of both at this point. And as we mentioned, we're still not quite meeting that, that demand of keeping up with, with what we're planting and maintaining the ten thousand mature trees we have.
Thank you, and thanks for all your great work in the department.
Thank you, Counselor Braithwaite. Counselor Appleton, you're up next.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you to staff. A couple of questions, I guess. I'll start, I'll start broad and go specific. How about that? I was just wondering whether Mr. Meekel might comment. Just, I guess, this is, there's, there's lots of detailed information presented here, but I just wonder for the public certification and just for council's reference, overall, what are some of the main drivers on the expense side of things from a pre-COVID budget at Park Track and Culture and to where we are now? Because there is a reasonably significant increase there. And of course, we, we can track, we can reasonably understand how the, the revenue is affected by COVID, and certainly there's some expenses that I think have been brought, brought about in that time. So just from a broad strokes type of perspective, we're at a, a higher budget now than pre-COVID. Where are the main categories of that's coming from?
Mr. Meekel?
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you to Counselor Appleton. Broad strokes, it's, you know, it's an interesting one. This, it's, recreation in particular operates in that, that kind of business model, and so, and it's, it's recreation. It's people's disposable time and, and income, so to speak, or discretionary time and income. And so we kind of got the double hit through, or triple even, through the pandemic, where we saw, you know, people's fears of being in public spaces and being with other people took some time to, to get over, and we're still seeing that. There's still a segment of the population that is hesitant to participate in public recreation. We also see inflation certainly impacting people's discretionary income and, and the choices they have to make there. And then, you know, we also, at that same time, felt some, the staffing pinch and, and the staffing challenges that have been experienced there. On the expense side, we, as everybody else does, also purchase goods and services within that same environment. So we're seeing the inflationary impacts of that as well, and trying to maintain those staffing levels to provide that level of service for the customers. One of the things that I think has probably shifted a little bit from us, for us, from pre-pandemic to now is what I would call our participant-to-instructor, or ratios of participants to instructors in our programs. There's, you know, knowing that, and from the feedback we get from our participants, we still try to maintain, we're not probably in all of our classes back up to that kind of same participant-to-instructor ratio in those classes. So of course, that does change your, your net at the end of the day. I think some of those general cost drivers, so for parks and, and for our maintenance teams, which was mentioned in Public Works and Engineering, we also pay under the same fleet services. So we're seeing ten percent increases in, in fleet services and in purchasing of, and maintaining those, those pieces of equipment for us. We're also seeing increases in costs for services. So we've seen some changes in, so an example being, a number of our programs, especially in the fitness area, are contracted programs. So we contract a yoga instructor who runs their own business. So they're in the same place, purchasing products out in, in, for their business, and they're transferring those costs to our contracts. So we've seen some shifts in those contracts that have changed again that net piece. So just some of those general kind of trends, I think, have impacted where we're at in, in general. But yeah, not a, I'm not a hundred percent sure if I've answered your question there, but yeah, if there's more clarification, please let me know.
Counselor Appleton?
No, I appreciate that. Thank you very much, Mr. Meekel. Secondly, I'm just wondering, there is a staffing forecast at the beginning of the section that outlines additional FTEs for two thousand twenty-four, and I'm wondering whether that's inclusive of the additional FTEs laid out at the end of the section in terms of additional arborist, et cetera. And so it's either just over three additional FTEs, that's either inclusive of those, or it's one and a half or so FTEs, and I'm just wondering what those are, what those are going towards, if it's inclusive or not, I guess.
You're referring on page eighty-nine, there's a staffing history and forecast, which has a plus-three-point-two FTE. And then there's a, there's a, there's a description of the arborist and the booking clerk and the contracted arborist.
Yep. Thank you. I can speak to that.
Please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you to Counselor Appleton. So the FTEs combination, so what you see in some of our areas where you see those increases in expenses because there's increases in revenues. So in many cases, again, back to that participant-to-instructor ratio, we include and we count our auxiliary staff pool in those FTEs. So in some cases where we've increased revenues or the program is very popular and we've added places or we've moved it to a larger space, we've, a couple of examples of moving our fitness classes actually into the indoor sports field, which, if you get a chance some mornings to come and watch that, it's, it's fantastic to watch. People have a great time in there. So we've increased those, but you bring on another staff to look after that. So there's sort of that offsetting piece. So some of those FTEs will be increased because of increasing revenues in areas, increasing participation. My understanding is that does include the one-point-five for the arborist and the parks booking clerk request.
Thank you. Please continue.
One final question. One final question, your worship, again, in the trend of more specific. I appreciate Mr. Mickle's comments, and through you too, Mr. Mickle. Appreciate the comments about sort of usage and I guess, not, the broader change, I guess, in usage at Monterey. And I've been very sort of curious about ongoing sort of evolution of use of space at Monterey. So that's, that's interesting to me. I'm just wondering whether that comes along with an equivalent demand for space usage. You know, there are sometimes, and I know that it's small sample size, there are some times where I see that maybe some of those spaces are, you know, appear to be a little bit underutilized, when I know that there's a lot of demand for community meeting space and those types of things. And so that's probably a little bit implicit in what's implied here in opportunities for additional revenue at Monterey. But maybe Mr. Mickle could sort of elaborate a little bit on what that additional revenue possibility at Monterey specifically might look like in light of the changing usage pattern, I guess.
Mr. Mickle?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Through you to Councilor Appleton. We're actually right in the process now of working with our primary partner at Monterey, the Monterey Recreation Activities Association, to do an analysis of that room usage. So there, as I said, we've seen a bit of a decrease in attendance and participation in some of the social club activities that have historically been in several rooms, in some of our bigger rooms. And so we're going through that process of actually combining some of those clubs to share a space, so that we could use the larger space for another program. And we're just in the middle of that. So we're seeing, hopefully through this year, and it should be, we should have that analysis and some of those changes complete for the September start. Summer's a traditionally fairly quiet time at the Monterey Center. But that is exactly the kind of process we're in right now, is reallocation of that space to make sure we are maximizing use of those spaces and ensuring we're meeting those demands. So we've seen an increase in demand for some of the drop-in fitness classes at Monterey. So places where can we add those classes? Can we move them? Most of them actually are in the biggest space there already. So just looking at those opportunities to do that. But that is the analysis that's currently underway.
Thank you, Councilor Appleton. Are there any other questions for Mr. Mickle?
I have just a few pieces, I think. Just on that, I've just, maybe these are, some of these are questions, some of them are just sort of things that maybe take away as possibilities. I think we do have a, you know, a need for additional revenue. I think our costs are largely fixed, and so either side of that equation is always revenue. I just had a question about possibility, given the lower usage in the summer at Monterey, that big room would be an ideal place, just like stage camps, if you were sort of had outgoing camps to have people come and go. And is there anything consideration of maybe using that maybe for, for younger groups, during the slow times, for maybe some of the camps directly, or at least as a sort of a place that people meet in the morning and head out for the day?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, that is a consideration we are taking a look at. Where it probably won't be for 2024 summer, but that is a possibility for 2025. We are looking at some shifting, so without getting too adept into-
I don't need the details, that's fine.
Yeah, we, yes, you're considering it as sufficient.
Absolutely.
I don't want to belabor this at the budget meeting side.
Yep. I'm curious, at the reception, I noticed that the product sales budget at 40, we're up to 54,000. It speaks to, there's a captive marketplace there that might be interested. Is there, is there thoughts going into that? Are there ways you might be able to increase that even more and look at some product selection and things at the front desk there?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, that is also on our radar. And this past year, we hired a new manager of recreation, or sorry, of reception services, Camille LaRocque. And she's done a wonderful job of taking a look at that, our whole product sales there. And one of the issues we also had, so through the pandemic, as a side note, an impact that many people won't know, we had a real struggle getting bathing suits. And so that has rebounded and has picked up quite a bit. So we, yes, bathing suit sales have rebounded quite substantially. So for-
You don't have a baby suit, you just go without? Is that how that works at the recreation center?
Late night twins, yeah.
Charge more without a baby suit? I don't know. The question on the, on the arborist side, so it's going downhill fast here, we'll just, so on the arborist side, I know that there's, I saw there were some grants we got for some summer students and things like that. Is there any opportunity there, perhaps just to either defer or look at that, that position and maybe ramp up auxiliary, like student-type things that could, that could come in the summertime, do the majority of the work that, for those new, that time when most of the watering things have to be done? And look at that as a model, as opposed to a full-time position? Or is it the skill set of the arborists that are being, is being required? Mr. Mickle?
Thank you, your worship. It is the certified arborist skill set that is required.
You don't have to say anything more, that's good.
Yeah, we have student positions that we're building towards that, but yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm trying to keep these questions and answers short, so we'll just do it. Curious if there's any thought at Henderson of targeting Uvic students. I know there's, I've certainly heard grumblings about the cost of their internal recreation services. And while we don't, Henderson does not have the same, we do have services. And I'm curious if there's been any thought of doing sort of targeted outreach at that very captive audience of potential clients that Uvic?
Thank you, your worship. Actually, we have chatted about, although we're a little hesitant placing flyers in the cars all parked along Henderson there. So yes, we have, that has been a consideration for sure.
Maybe an ad in the martlet or something like that might be, but if there's actually specific programs that are, you know, so that the people aren't going to, feel they're going to show up, and there's going to be a bunch of 65-year-olds when they're the only person there. They probably want to be with peers. So if there's something specific we could offer, that might be something worthwhile and round out some revenue.
Yeah, the feedback we get is that students actually prefer the Oak Bay Recreation Center weight room in particular, just much more options and more free weights, which is geared towards their interests.
Fair. Question about at the, I talked about increase in lunches. Is there any thought about perhaps doing more targeted school lunches, so that actually targeting the 1,200 students at Oak Bay High and seeing if there might be some interest for some, you know, moderately priced but healthier lunch options from that, from that body?
Thank you, your worship. We actually draw a fairly decent crowd from Oak Bay High already for lunches up there. And we haven't really talked about a targeted lunch program, so we'll make a note of that for us to take a look at in that sense. We are bringing in a lunch program for our camps this summer, expanding our lunch program for camps this summer. So that'll be something too, and hoping that helps out as well.
Just three more. Consideration of after-school care. I know we're hearing a lot from the community, people are hanging on to their, you know, the daycare spots and so forth, but they're also desperately in need of after-school care. And I know we don't do it within the NLC, but, so much, but, you know, there are partnerships, maybe we could look at, that we could hire high school students to watch over after-school care, where it doesn't require the same level of certification and, but, you know, provide as a service. It's a much-needed service that we might be able to partner with the high school on.
Thank you, your worship. That, we have explored that avenue. There's a couple of legislative requirements in childcare licensing that are prohibitive of that. So right now, one of those requirements is anybody working in licensed care, and anything that's over two hours long is, has to be licensed with Island Health. And they, we cannot have anybody under 19 years old employed in those programs. So there's some short-term things you could do, but right now, our space is full at the NLC. We've got, if we can bring in a few more staff, we can probably add about 20 children to that. But each of those spaces is already prescribed in the after-school time slot. So there's some limitations and some challenges there in childcare. There's some legislative requirements we need to meet.
So with the two-hour limit, though, is that, like, if you provide it from 3:00 to 4:30 every day, does that, like, 90 minutes a day for after-school? Thinking of students from Willows, we could just have like a walking train walk down there and do after-school care with them. Is that, is that not feasible? Or is that still, because it's cumulative over time, count?
It's, could be possible. We already do walk children back from Willows to the NLC, to our after-school care there. 4:30, the majority of parents, that time is not great. You'd have to, you know, most folks want later than that. We can certainly explore some options there. The school might be a better place that we could partner with, that they may be able to offer something down that line. But we have explored some of those options and run into a few roadblocks there.
Fair. I was thinking the school may have space, and we might have, be able to coordinate and have a sort of fallback to someone who's certified up the hallway kind of thing, if they need it. I've just heard so many people in desperate need of after-school care, that if we could help, help that situation and increase revenue, that would be helpful. Second to last, can we seek sponsors for some of our cultural events? So music in the park, some of the other things, can we, can we look, and we do it for some of our art pieces, is it possible to perhaps look at that as a way of offsetting some of our costs?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I will actually be bringing some policy adjustments and updates forward in this year to address things like sponsorship and advertising.
I saw that no name look that happened here, so I guess there's something, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, I have discussion.
It's been discussed with the advisory committee, PRC advisory committee. And yeah, I think there's some opportunities there, as well as some opportunities through our facility bookings policy, to open some avenues for potentially other rentals and other opportunities for sponsorship and advertising. So.
Great, thank you. Last question, maybe a more complicated one. The fees, I know that we approve that on an annual basis. We know that's being looked at right now. I also know there's a limited tolerance for people to see any increase in any one time. And we haven't, because of COVID, we didn't do our increases very much. We're maybe have fallen behind, but we haven't been kind of giving the gentle increases. So increases are going to be visible. I'm curious if there's any interest or possibility of starting to do some, some sort of small incremental increases, sort of mid-year, so that you kind of do two small increases a year going, you know, going forward in anticipation of increasing those things, if that's something we might be able to implement even before the economic impact happens. But, you know, getting two, 5% increases in the course of a year seems less, more palatable to people than getting one 10% increase quite often.
Thank you, your worship, and one of those few times I probably get to say, we're ahead of you. So we already have-
Every question I've asked has been ahead of me, so that's not true.
We, we did in 2023, September 2023, we did a 4% increase to all of our admission fees. We have traditionally been doing two, you know, two-ish, two, between 2% and 3% on any program registration fees. What we had held steady was on those admission fees. So we did the 4% increase last year, coming out of COVID. We're planning for a similar again this year. We also, with this economic analysis, did that, did a survey. So we're just getting back to that feedback. What I've, at my first glance, looks like that fee increase last September was, was well tolerated. We really had no negative feedback on that. And from the survey through the economic analysis, sounds like it was well tolerated as well. And, and in fact, that's likely where we're headed again, is about another 4% increase. Although, we do keep in mind what the market looks like and take a look at where we fit within the market in the region. So what it may look like is some select passes or select options go up a little higher, whereas some don't rise as much. So we're just trying to keep ourselves in line with that. But yes, that is, that is underway.
Thank you. So I took up more time than necessary here, but I had those questions. Councilor Green? I said, I said Green?
Thank you. Through you to Mr. Mickle. Mr. Mickle, thank you for this, all of this. I just wanted to ask you a question, and that is about the use of co-op programs. And I'm a great advocate of co-op programs, and we have such great resources with Comoson College and Uvic in particular, and Royal Rose as well. So I just wondered, through the mayor to you, and you're nodding. So you're nodding as though you're quite positive about them, which is great. So I just wanted to know if you could update or talk about co-op. I didn't see it anywhere in the plan, but-
Mr. Mickle?
The only thing was the Canada Student Employment Program that was referenced. Thank you.
Mr. Mickle?
Thank you, your worship. Through you to Councilor Green. We do engage, so the Comoson programs tend to be practicums, and we have had practicum students, mostly in our sports and fitness areas, which is connected more closely to the program at Comoson. The Rec and Health Program at Uvic is a co-op program. We have currently two students that are doing some of their co-op hours with us. And then what we're proposing and looking at is, co-ops tend to be four months or eight months in length. We traditionally have had full-time positions for three months for the summer, so we're trying to extend that so we can exactly do what you're saying, help to attract some of those co-op students for those summer positions. And anywhere where we have term positions, we send information to Uvic Co-op and invite them to apply. Now, they apply with the general public or with anyone else who's applying. But yeah, we're very interested in that as well.
Thank you. I'm really pleased to hear that, and I appreciate your interest in the program. I would love to see it spread across the municipality, actually, at some point, because it is, it's an excellent program, and it leads often to new employees. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, we have three minutes left or so. Oh, Councilor Smart?
I have one quick, just general question about operational budgeting. I don't, yeah. Through you, Mayor to Director Payne, I wanted to just clarify, do we budget for 100% of staffing costs? Or because staff positions are never 100% filled, do you have a metric in which you budget for a certain percentage of staffing costs?
Mr. Payne?
Through you, worship, a really good question. We budget for 100% of the costs, so we assume in the budget no vacancies, even though we know in reality that's never been the case. But it just, it's a funding authority for us to meet those levels, should we be able to. Otherwise, we're necessarily ensuring that we can't reach the service level. And that, you know, that approach does vary from municipalities to municipality, but that's, that's how we go about it here.
Thank you, Councilor. Go ahead, Councilor Smart.
Oh, thank you. And yeah, I guess you kind of started answering my next question, which is, is that an opportunity? I'm curious, based on the last year and maybe the last five years, like what percentage are staff positions typically filled? And just to clarify that, I think you sort of answered it. Other municipalities do take advantage of that kind of economy in order to lower property taxes?
Mr. Payne?
Through you, worship. I would have to look through the general surplus over the last couple of years. If I had to just pull a figure out at the moment, I would estimate, you know, at least a half a million dollars in budget surplus due to vacancies. The one issue with Parks, Recreation and Culture, though, is that staff vacancies could actually mean worse financial performance, depending on the program. So it has, you have to be a little careful there. But again, the Parks, Recreation and Culture actual financial results have exceeded budgeted for quite some time, usually by a half a million dollar margin. So if you're looking for some stopgap, you know, it's a potential stopgap. It would stray from our, from our philosophical approach, but, you know, times are unique, so.
Thank you. I don't see any others. Thank you very much, Mr. Mickle. I think, I was ready to gather finishing comments in the two minutes we have left before this ends automatically from staff. All right, I will just say thank you so much to all of the leadership team who's come through here today and gone through, answered all the questions. And always amazed at how at-hand all the questions are when we ask these things. So well done, everyone. Thank you to council, and we will see everyone on Monday for a regularly scheduled committee of the whole meeting. I guess we've seen a motion to adjourn. Move and second it. All those in favor? Any opposed, unopposed? Thank you, everyone.